The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
This is petition 4018, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. This hearing was continued from June 11th, 2018. We did get a letter back from Kristen Kelly, it's dated June 21st. It's addressed to Lynn Bouchard, I'll read it into the record, this is regarding petition 40-18. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on June 18th, 2018, the planning board voted seven to zero to recommend approval of this petition with the following amendments. Section 105.5.9, revise the text within 1,000 feet to within 500 feet. Add item 105.6.3.i, in quotes, "a traffic impact report as set forth in the section 105.6.4.f", end quote. Add item 105.6.3.j, quote, "a water and power consumption plan", end quote. These amendments have been made to the draft ordinance document, please find a copy of the draft dated June 21st, 2018 attached to this letter. Please contact John Souza, Planning Board Chairman, with any questions. Thank you for all your time, effort, and support in developing this ordinance, we appreciate your assistance. Sincerely, Kristen Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. My notes, in my memory, tell me that these are the three changes that we had talked about at the last public hearing and that we were looking for. I'll go to members of Legal Affairs first to see if they have any questions or comments. Counsel Frida?
I'm going to reserve my comments for the vote.
Okay. Counsel Bedanza?
I don't have, I mean, I think that's faithful to what our prior hearing with the, or joint hearing with the planning board representatives.
Right.
I don't have any additional comments or questions.
Okay. Any other city councilors have any questions or comments at this time? Counsel Zephyr?
I'll reserve mine actually until we talk about the vote.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll go to the audience, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, unless there's any objection, at this point, I'll move to close the public hearing and we'll take this up later on tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See now there's a 10-minute delay. I can say.
This is petition 4018, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational This hearing was continued from June 11th, 2018. We did get a letter back from Kristen Kelly, it's dated June 21st. It's addressed to Lynn Bouchard, I'll read it into the record, this is regarding petition 40-18. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on June 18th, 2018, the planning board voted seven to zero to recommend approval of this petition with the following amendments. Section 105.5.9, revise the text within 1,000 feet to within 500 feet. Add item 105.6.3.i, in quotes, "a traffic impact report as set forth in the section Add item 105.6.3.j, quote, "a water and power consumption plan", end quote. These amendments have been made to the draft ordinance document, please find a copy of the draft dated June 21st, 2018 attached to this letter. Please contact John Souza, Planning Board Chairman, with any questions. Thank you for all your time, effort, and support in developing this ordinance, we appreciate your assistance. Sincerely, Kristen Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. My notes, in my memory, tell me that these are the three changes that we had talked about at the last public hearing and that we were looking for. I'll go to members of Legal Affairs first to see if they have any questions or comments. Counsel Frida?
I'm going to reserve my comments for the vote.
Okay. Counsel Bedanza?
I don't have, I mean, I think that's faithful to what our prior hearing with the, or joint hearing with the planning board representatives.
Right.
I don't have any additional comments or questions.
Okay. Any other city councilors have any questions or comments at this time? Counsel Zephyr?
I'll reserve mine actually until we talk about the vote.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll go to the audience, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, unless there's any objection, at this point, I'll move to close the public hearing and we'll take this up later on tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See now there's a 10-minute delay. I can say.
This is petition 4018, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. This hearing was continued from June 11th, 2018. We did get a letter back from Kristen Kelly, it's dated June 21st. It's addressed to Lynn Bouchard, I'll read it into the record, this is regarding petition 40-18. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on June 18th, 2018, the planning board voted seven to zero to recommend approval of this petition with the following amendments. Section 105.5.9, revise the text within 1,000 feet to within 500 feet. Add item 105.6.3.i, in quotes, "a traffic impact report as set forth in the section 105.6.4.f", end quote. Add item 105.6.3.j, quote, "a water and power consumption plan", end quote. These amendments have been made to the draft ordinance document, please find a copy of the draft dated June 21st, 2018 attached to this letter. Please contact John Souza, Planning Board Chairman, with any questions. Thank you for all your time, effort, and support in developing this ordinance, we appreciate your assistance. Sincerely, Kristen Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. My notes, in my memory, tell me that these are the three changes that we had talked about at the last public hearing and that we were looking for. I'll go to members of Legal Affairs first to see if they have any questions or comments. Counsel Frida?
I'm going to reserve my comments for the vote.
Okay. Counsel Bedanza?
I don't have, I mean, I think that's faithful to what our prior hearing with the, or joint hearing with the planning board representatives.
Right.
I don't have any additional comments or questions.
Okay. Any other city councilors have any questions or comments at this time? Counsel Zephyr?
I'll reserve mine actually until we talk about the vote.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll go to the audience, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, unless there's any objection, at this point, I'll move to close the public hearing and we'll take this up later on tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See now there's a 10-minute delay. I can say.
This is petition 4018, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. This hearing was continued from June 11th, 2018. We did get a letter back from Kristen Kelly, it's dated June 21st. It's addressed to Lynn Bouchard, I'll read it into the record, this is regarding petition 40-18. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on June 18th, 2018, the planning board voted seven to zero to recommend approval of this petition with the following amendments. Section 105.5.9, revise the text within 1,000 feet to within 500 feet. Add item 105.6.3.i, in quotes, "a traffic impact report as set forth in the section 105.6.4.f", end quote. Add item 105.6.3.j, quote, "a water and power consumption plan", end quote. These amendments have been made to the draft ordinance document, please find a copy of the draft dated June 21st, 2018 attached to this letter. Please contact John Souza, Planning Board Chairman, with any questions. Thank you for all your time, effort, and support in developing this ordinance, we appreciate your assistance. Sincerely, Kristen Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. My notes, in my memory, tell me that these are the three changes that we had talked about at the last public hearing and that we were looking for. I'll go to members of Legal Affairs first to see if they have any questions or comments. Counsel Frida?
I'm going to reserve my comments for the vote.
Okay. Counsel Bedanza?
I don't have, I mean, I think that's faithful to what our prior hearing with the, or joint hearing with the planning board representatives.
Right.
I don't have any additional comments or questions.
Okay. Any other city councilors have any questions or comments at this time? Counsel Zephyr?
I'll reserve mine actually until we talk about the vote.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll go to the audience, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, unless there's any objection, at this point, I'll move to close the public hearing and we'll take this up later on tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See now there's a 10-minute delay. I can say.
This is petition 4018, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. This hearing was continued from June 11th, 2018. We did get a letter back from Kristen Kelly, it's dated June 21st. It's addressed to Lynn Bouchard, I'll read it into the record, this is regarding petition 40-18. Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on June 18th, 2018, the planning board voted seven to zero to recommend approval of this petition with the following amendments. Section 105.5.9, revise the text within 1,000 feet to within 500 feet. Add item 105.6.3.i, in quotes, "a traffic impact report as set forth in the section 105.6.4.f", end quote. Add item 105.6.3.j, quote, "a water and power consumption plan", end quote. These amendments have been made to the draft ordinance document, please find a copy of the draft dated June 21st, 2018 attached to this letter. Please contact John Souza, Planning Board Chairman, with any questions. Thank you for all your time, effort, and support in developing this ordinance, we appreciate your assistance. Sincerely, Kristen Kelly, Director of Planning and Development. My notes, in my memory, tell me that these are the three changes that we had talked about at the last public hearing and that we were looking for. I'll go to members of Legal Affairs first to see if they have any questions or comments. Counsel Frida?
I'm going to reserve my comments for the vote.
Okay. Counsel Bedanza?
I don't have, I mean, I think that's faithful to what our prior hearing with the, or joint hearing with the planning board representatives.
Right.
I don't have any additional comments or questions.
Okay. Any other city councilors have any questions or comments at this time? Counsel Zephyr?
I'll reserve mine actually until we talk about the vote.
Okay. Anyone else? Counsel Cormier?
Can you just tell me the, how long is it going to take to replace? Can we expect some traffic delays? Is this going to, how's this going to affect the traffic in that area?
I don't think it's going to affect the traffic on site. They'll probably have to close down, shut the site off, when they remove the tanks and then install the new tanks, they'll have an 18-wheeler scheduled to back up, unload a tank, put it in the hole, get the other tank, same thing unloaded and dropped in the hole. That's a one-day occurrence, installation of the tanks to get them in the ground, then they do the tank top piping, which is, you know, maybe a week or so. So it's, it's...
Okay, so other than the 18-wheeler coming in, there shouldn't be any blockage in the traffic, the traffic flow in that area?
That's correct, there shouldn't be no problem in terms of the existing roadway, we're not dealing with the outside, the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Anyone else? All right, before I go to the public, we did get a couple of letters in, I'll read those into the record. We have a letter dated June 21st, 2018, addressed to the city clerk, and this is from Christopher J. Knuth, he's the director of the Health Department. Reference line is petition 6918. Dear Ms. Bouchard, the Leominster Health Department has reviewed the proposal to store 30,000 gallons of petroleum products in underground storage tanks at an existing gasoline south station located at 436 Lancaster Street. The request is somewhat confusing as they are already permitted to have 30,000 gallons of petroleum at this location. The Health Department has no objections to them changing from storing in three USTs to two USTs, underground storage tanks, holding the current capacity they are permitted for. Newer USTs have increased safety features for detection and prevention of leaks. We hope the Legal Affairs Committee of the City Council finds our comments useful in their evaluation of this petition. Please feel free to contact our office if you need further information or if anyone would like to discuss our opinion. Sincerely, Christopher J. Knuth, Director. We also have a letter dated May 31st, 2018, from the Building Commissioner, it's addressed to the Legal Affairs Committee. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated May 30th, 2018 requesting my recommendation on petition 6918 to amend the existing license to store 30,000 gallons of gasoline/diesel at 436 Lancaster Street. I am in favor of this amendment as this is a pre-existing gas station and they are trying to upgrade their tank storage. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile, Building Commissioner. I'll go to the audience, are there any members of the audience who wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Do any other councilors have any questions or comments? Counsel Marsham?
The only thing I would say, this is not a special permit, we're basically amending the existing license. So on a caution note, we're not familiar at this time of any conditions that may have been placed on the original license, maybe by the Fire Department, Health Department, so we're just caution us to make sure that if there were in fact some that we're not aware of, that they would apply to this license this evening. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe we requested an opinion from the fire chief.
They're supposed to send somebody down.
They're supposed to send somebody down? Okay.
He signed off on the application.
Yeah, I know he did, I know he did. Do you know, do you know why he was sending someone down or he just indicated he would?
He just answered the question.
Okay.
So one question they might have, if I may, when you drain the existing tanks, what do you do with the fuel until the new tanks are put in? Does that truck stay on campus or do you remove it?
No, what they'll do is they will drain the tanks and whatever residual gasoline is in there, they take that away.
So that leaves campus?
Right.
Okay.
What they do is they essentially rinse the tanks.
Right.
Before they pull them out and essentially destroy the tanks.
Right.
In fiberglass.
Okay, but you're not going to have any storage above ground for a period of time?
No.
Okay, it's the only thing I can think of.
Let me just go to Legal Affairs for a moment. The fire chief signed off that he approved this and apparently he was going to send someone down in case we had any questions. I mean, in my opinion, this is a pretty straightforward application.
I agree, it's 30,000 for 30,000, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's just an upgrade.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, Counsel Bedanza?
I'm fine with it as well.
Okay. At this point, unless there's an objection from any other councilors, I would close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Later on in the agenda, we'll deliberate and issue a decision. If you want to, if you want to stick around, sir, I can ask the council president to bring, I think it'll be a quick vote, so I can ask the council president to bring it up right away.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
This is petition 4018, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. This hearing was continued from June 11th, 2018. We did get a letter back from Kristen Kelly, it's dated June 21st. It's addressed to Lynn Bouchard, I'll read it into the record, this is regarding petition 40-18. Dear Ms. Bouchard, the Leominster Health Department has reviewed the proposal to store 30,000 gallons of petroleum products in underground storage tanks at an existing gasoline south station located at 436 Lancaster Street. The request is somewhat confusing as they are already permitted to have 30,000 gallons of petroleum at this location. The Health Department has no objections to them changing from storing in three USTs to two USTs, underground storage tanks, holding the current capacity they are permitted for. Newer USTs have increased safety features for detection and prevention of leaks. We hope the Legal Affairs Committee of the City Council finds our comments useful in their evaluation of this petition. Please feel free to contact our office if you need further information or if anyone would like to discuss our opinion. Sincerely, Christopher J. Knuth, Director. We also have a letter dated May 31st, 2018, from the Building Commissioner, it's addressed to the Legal Affairs Committee. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated May 30th, 2018 requesting my recommendation on petition 6918 to amend the existing license to store 30,000 gallons of gasoline/diesel at 436 Lancaster Street. I am in favor of this amendment as this is a pre-existing gas station and they are trying to upgrade their tank storage. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile, Building Commissioner. I'll go to the audience, are there any members of the audience who wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Do any other councilors have any questions or comments? Counsel Marsham?
The only thing I would say, this is not a special permit, we're basically amending the existing license. So on a caution note, we're not familiar at this time of any conditions that may have been placed on the original license, maybe by the Fire Department, Health Department, so we're just caution us to make sure that if there were in fact some that we're not aware of, that they would apply to this license this evening. Okay? Thank you.
And I believe we requested an opinion from the fire chief.
They're supposed to send somebody down.
They're supposed to send somebody down? Okay.
He signed off on the application.
Yeah, I know he did, I know he did. Do you know, do you know why he was sending someone down or he just indicated he would?
He just answered the question.
Okay.
So one question they might have, if I may, when you drain the existing tanks, what do you do with the fuel until the new tanks are put in? Does that truck stay on campus or do you remove it?
No, what they'll do is they will drain the tanks and whatever residual gasoline is in there, they take that away.
So that leaves campus?
Right.
Okay.
What they do is they essentially rinse the tanks.
Right.
Before they pull them out and essentially destroy the tanks.
Right.
In fiberglass.
Okay, but you're not going to have any storage above ground for a period of time?
No.
Okay, it's the only thing I can think of.
Let me just go to Legal Affairs for a moment. The fire chief signed off that he approved this and apparently he was going to send someone down in case we had any questions. I mean, in my opinion, this is a pretty straightforward application.
I agree, it's 30,000 for 30,000, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's just an upgrade.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, Counsel Bedanza?
I'm fine with it as well.
Okay. At this point, unless there's an objection from any other councilors, I would close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Later on in the agenda, we'll deliberate and issue a decision. If you want to, if you want to stick around, sir, I can ask the council president to bring, I think it'll be a quick vote, so I can ask the council president to bring it up right away.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
How's this going to affect the traffic in that area?
I don't think it's going to affect the traffic on-site. They'll probably have to close down, shut the site off when they remove the tanks, and then install the new tanks. They'll have an 18-wheeler scheduled to back up, unload a tank, put it in the hole, get the other tank, same thing, unloaded and dropped in the hole. That's a one-day occurrence, installation of the tanks to get them in the ground. Then they do the tank top piping, which is, you know, maybe a week or so. So it's...
Okay, so other than the 18-wheeler coming in, there shouldn't be any blockage in the traffic, the traffic flow in that area?
That's correct. There shouldn't be no problem in terms of the existing roadway. We're not dealing with the outside, the property line.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else? All right, before I go to the public, we did get a couple of letters in. I'll read those into the record. We have a letter dated June 21, 2018, addressed to the city clerk. And this is from Christopher J. Knuth. He's the director of the health department. Reference line is petition 6918. Dear Ms. Bouchard, the Lemonster Health Department has reviewed the proposal to store 30,000 gallons of petroleum products in underground storage tanks at an existing gasoline south station located at 436 Lancaster Street. The request is somewhat confusing as they are already permitted to have 30,000 gallons of petroleum at this location. The health department has no objections to them changing from storing in three USTs to two USTs, underground storage tanks, holding the current capacity they are permitted for. Newer USTs have increased safety features for detection and prevention of leaks. We hope the legal affairs committee of the city council finds our comments useful in their evaluation of this petition. Please feel free to contact our office if you need further information, or if anyone would like to discuss our opinion. Sincerely, Christopher J. Knuth, Director. We also have a letter dated May 31, 2018, from the building commissioner. It's addressed to the legal affairs committee. Members of the legal affairs committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated May 30, 2018, requesting my recommendation on petition 6918 to amend the existing license to store 30,000 gallons of gasoline/diesel at 436 Lancaster Street. I'm in favor of this amendment as this is a pre-existing gas station, and they are trying to upgrade their tank's storage. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile, Building Commissioner. I'll go to the audience. Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, do any members of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Do any other counselors have any questions or comments? Counsel Marshan?
The only thing I would say, this is not a special permit. We're basically amending the existing license. So on a caution note, we're not familiar at this time of any conditions that may have been placed on the original license, maybe by the fire department, the health department. So we're just caution us to make sure that if there were, in fact, some that we're not aware of, that they would apply to this license this evening. Okay? Thank you.
And I believe we requested an opinion from the fire chief.
They're supposed to send somebody down.
They're supposed to send somebody down? Okay.
He signed off on the application.
Yeah, I know he did. I know he did. Do you know why he was sending someone down, or he just indicated he would?
He just answered the question.
Okay.
So one question they might have, if I may. When you drain the existing tanks, what do you do with the fuel until the new tanks are put in? Does that truck stay on campus, or do you remove it?
Now, what they'll do is they will drain the tanks, and whatever residual gasoline is in there, they take that away.
So that leaves campus?
Right.
Okay.
What they do is they essentially rinse the tanks-
Right.
...before they pull them out and essentially destroy the tanks-
Right.
...in fiberglass.
Okay. But you're not going to have any storage above ground for a period of time?
No.
Okay. It's the only thing I can think of.
Let me just go to legal affairs for a moment. The fire chief signed off that he approved this, and apparently he was going to send someone down in case we had any questions. I mean, in my opinion, this is a pretty straightforward application.
I agree. It's 30,000 for 30,000, so I don't have-
Yeah, I mean, it's just an upgrade.
I have no problem with it.
Okay. Counsel Bedanson?
I'm fine with it as well.
Okay. At this point, unless there's an objection from any other counselors, I would close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Later on in the agenda, we'll deliberate and issue a decision. If you want to stick around, sir, I can ask the council president to bring... I think it'll be a quick vote, so I can ask the council president to bring it up right away.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
...C Committee, relative to C-76, for the appropriation of $124,444,352 to the fiscal year 2019 general fund budget, same to be raised/offset by fiscal year 2019 revenue. I'll open the hearing to members of the finance committee first. Are there any questions or comments or concerns? Counsel David Cormier?
I am all set on this. I'll save our comments for later in debate.
Other members of the council, any questions at this time or concerns? All right. I will open it up to the public. Does any member of the public have a comment relative to C-76?
Actually, I'd like to respectfully ask the council if I could, at the 7:15 meeting, I did a dry run of my talk. It's 2 minutes and around 30 seconds. I don't know if I can, instead of splitting it in half, do it at the 7:15?
That's up to the president.
No.
Okay, so I'll do a little now?
Before, you can speak for an hour right now if you want.
Okay.
Not that we're encouraging.
Trust me, I went through this and cut a lot out.
Gary, if it's 30 for you, it's 30 for them. We have to kind of stick to the rules.
I understand. Well, that's why I realized there's two parts and...
Yep. You have all the time in the world, sir.
All right. Thank you. Gary Zerman, 47 Lynnhaven Road, Lemonster, Mass. Talking about C-76. Another year and pretty much the same thing, year after year. You get the budget in June, it passes with no alterations, and go into another year. $3.5 million higher, roughly $30 million more in the budget from 10 years ago. Where's accountability within all levels of our government? We are a coddling and greedy society, and the taxpayers are paying the price. It's easy to spend other people's money, but not so easy to hold the department accountable and financially responsible. So little did I know, my hard-earned dollars would be spent on the following. Lifetime health care after 10 years working for the city or schools. Right now, just in the school system, there's $2.4 million in early retirement health care paid by the taxpayers. Towns can't sustain retirements, and now they have to fund OPEB, millions in this fund. We have a fire department overtime yearly in the millions. In 2017, other pay, not base pay, totaled $2.5 million. 107 job titles listed as firefighters, 38 of them making gross pay over $100,000. Job titles listed as dispatchers had an other pay, not base pay, totaling $134,000. The top five firefighters had other pay, not base pay, over $47,000 a year. Wire inspector making over $53,000 in pay outside the base pay. Someone in the highway department paid $42,000 in other pay. In 2017, the other pay, again, not base pay, for the city came to $6.1 million. And on the school department side, it came to $2.1 million. A city-funded ambulance with no idea of cost behind the ambulance, and taxpayers, if they have to use it, they have to pay for it. A city-vehicle home, taken home every day, I think it's the Ashperham, costing taxpayers probably $8,000 a year, just in gas, never mind wear and tear. And now this person just got a brand-new vehicle, costing thousands. Hardly see many people on the mart bus and see the people picked up and dropped off right in front of their house. But I'm not sure what the city... I couldn't find anything in the expense report on what the city pays for this service. It takes $1.7 million a year to run the library. Taxpayers paying for a private school for 30 to 50 kids down at City Place. Not even sure what this costs anymore. Last thing, it was $6,000 or $700,000. Taxpayers paying for free and reduced lunch for roughly 60% of the kids in the schools for breakfast and lunch. Taxpayers paying $2.5 million for busing roughly 180 kids, 80 of those kids out of district en masse because of the law, and that's $2.5 million. These are just some things I've seen over the years. It's so sad for the taxpayer, and nothing seems to be changing. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that has a comment on C-76?
Good evening. Bonnie Budd, 321 Prospect Street. I'm here to once again humbly request you approve the school department's budget as presented by Superintendent Deacon. It's also clear that we need to explore out of the box for some decade-old issues. Mr. Marshan mentioned some great examples from other districts on Thursday. Remember, our district-wide rate for free and reduced lunch is 58%. Students need our support so opportunities continue to be accessible and exist for after-school hours. Student experience is so much more than academics. Many scholarships come from sports, arts, and music. Traditional fundraisers are not enough. Are we exploring partnerships with corporations to revamp our athletic facilities, assist with uniform costs and fees? Students should not have to practice in hallways because we lack adequate practice space. Wouldn't it be fantastic to host local track meets instead of always-away meets? Also, what about art and music? It's costly to put on plays and attend competitions. However, students should have access to these enriching opportunities. If traditional donations are decreasing, we must explore other avenues to ensure students are not turned away, like Skyview students who this past year did not attend the Great East Music Festival in part due to cost. They also did not participate in citywide art show due to no art program. The schools should not have to work on these concerns alone. We as a community must help as the city in its entirety benefits. Visitors to our performances and games will translate into concession stand sales, local eatery, and shop sales. Let's begin out-of-the-box engagement before we are trapped in our own Pandora's Box. I share a quote from Global Economic Symposium. "The only thing more expensive than investing in education is not investing in education. Inadequate education produces high costs for society in terms of public spending, crime, health, and economic growth." I close by noting, much of your work as an elected official goes unnoticed in the public eye, along with the work by school administration, staff, and volunteers. I applaud you and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Any other member of the public have a comment?
Regarding C-76, it's Tom Knackie, 315 Joslin Street in Lemonster. I sat with you in these chambers last Tuesday and listened to the needs of both the police and fire departments, and their concerns were very eye-opening. The police using outdated analysis software, minimal funding for training, the continued need for domestic abuse officer and opioid community liaison, the fire department lacking decontamination machines, their concerns about work-related cancer levels, and the lack of workspace, all serious issues that I'm sure you will address. Last Thursday, we heard about the DPW in the schools. While the schools appear to be turning in the right direction, the mayor's decision to cut $1.4 million from their transportation needs is troubling and not necessary. After the October 1 deadline, finance has been asked about the release of the free cash numbers. Responders centered around the school department holding up the number's release. I'm assuming this had to do with a comprehensive audit of the school department, so vigorously called for by the mayor last year as a result of the budget crisis and the cuts. Yet when the free cash total of $9.7 million was released in April, and $5 million of that moved into the lockbox known as the stabilization fund, and I understand some of that $5 million was repayment of taxpayer money borrowed during the crisis, yet we have still heard nothing about the comprehensive audit. There have been drafts, there have been revisions, but no release of the final report. Why not? What does it say? What have we learned? We hear plenty about Lemonster being the leader in paying down its retirement and OPEB benefits, but I ask you, at what cost? At the expense of not busing our kids to school, of which 60% are identified by the state as being economically disadvantaged? I would like to compare some funding ratios from the Public Employees Retirement Administration Commission's 2017 investment report. The state allows and recommends funding up to the year 2040. Andover is 49% fully funded. Belmont and Brookline, 55%. Newton, 50%. Middlesex County, 45% fully funded. The mass teachers' retirement system, 52%. Other gateway cities such as Lawrence, 46% fully funded. Lowell, 56%. And Lynn, 49%. Lemonster's retirement obligation is 90% fully funded. Yes, almost 20 years ahead of the state-recommended timeframe. My question is, why the rush? Is it possible to scale back this aggressive paydown of our retirement benefits, thereby leaving more taxpayer dollars in the city budget to fully fund transportation, maybe even eliminate the bus fee, which roughly 600 households pay, as well as help support public safety, DPW, veterans, seniors, and retirees? I believe it is possible and the right thing to do. The funny thing is, we would still, most likely, be the first fully-funded city in the state if we did scale back our retirement obligations. For 25 years, I've been telling my seventh graders that being in school is the best part of their day, even though they may not realize it yet. Yes, they laugh and moan and roll their eyes, of course. The reality, though, is that for many of our most vulnerable, at-risk students, getting to school is the hardest part of their day. I ask you, Mr. Mayor, to do the right thing and appropriate the $1.4 million to fully fund transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knackie. Is any other member of the public that wishes to address us regarding C-76?
Hello. Rochelle Lappinen, 32 Valley View Road. I come here not just to speak for my own family. I have a son that's a freshman. But for all the families that would have a hard time getting their kids to school. I live over seven miles away. If my son was to walk, it would take him an hour and 40 minutes. He'd love to ride his bike, as I said the other day. But I don't think that's safe. My father was hit on Hamilton Street, and that's the way he'd have to go to ride to school. I work in Worcester at North High School at 7:00 in the morning, so I don't know how I could drive him there. I'm here to speak for all the other families that cannot be here, that maybe they don't have a car, maybe they're disabled, maybe they have small children, and they're going to have a hard time getting their kids to school. My friend's a teacher at Lemonster High, and she says that many parents, it's up to their kids to get to school because they have to leave super early in the morning. And if they end up leaving to work early, their kids are probably just not going to come. They're not able to, maybe they don't have desire or whatnot. So it's very, very important. I don't understand how we could have a city where people can live seven miles or further from the high school and not bus the students. I mean, how are they going to get here? So, again, I would second the idea of finding a way to fund this. It's a small chunk of change compared to the whole entire budget, and it's so important. Thank you.
John Richards, City Controller. Just to clear up some of the information that was spoken just now, I'm sure you realize, but just for the members of the public, that the city council does not have any discretion on the retirement appropriation. That is voted by the retirement board, and the appropriation is issued... the amount is issued by PARAC. Secondly, in direct opposition to what the previous speaker spoke about, your funding, the city's funding properly of the OPEB and the pension system is saving money for the taxpayers and for the citizens and their services in the city of Lemonster. The city and elected officials incur a benefit of which the speaker participates, and when he works, he's earning benefits for when he retires for health insurance. The city has elected to be responsible, and for this year's taxpayers, who are receiving the benefit of the teachers and other active employees, are paying their cost. It's called normal cost in OPEB. Anything that you don't pay is not going away. It is being increased by 7.5% per year. It's a very expensive way to finance, and that's why GASBY and Moody's and all financial monitoring bodies recommend, have come up with this methodology of financing these costs. We've been doing it in the retirement system since the mid-'80s, and now it's a requirement in the OPEB area. So just for informational purposes, I thought it would be important that the intergenerational equity of this year's taxpayers paying for this year's services, and which will result in millions, tens, and hundreds of millions of dollars of savings for the taxpayer and in increased services for the people of Lemonster. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Is there any other member of the public that has a comment regarding C-76? I'll ask one more time. Does any other member of the public have a comment on C-76? And a third and final time, seeing none, I'll go back to the council. Does any member of the council have a comment regarding C-76 at this juncture? Seeing none, Mr. President, I propose to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Is there a hearing objection? C-77, relative to the appropriation of $5,827,108 to the fiscal year 2019 water department budget, same to be raised from the fiscal year 2019 water rates as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. I'll go first to the members of finance. Any questions regarding... or comments regarding C-77?
No. I believe the water department was here. We got a full explanation from them. I have no questions.
I'm all set as well.
Members of the council generally? I'll go to the public. Does any member of the public have a comment regarding C-77? I'll ask a second time. Does any member of the public have a comment regarding C-77? And a third and final time, Mr. President, I propose to close the hearing with regard to C-77.
Thank you.
C-78, relative to the appropriation of $5,471,083 to the fiscal year 2019 sewer department budget, same to be raised, offset by fiscal year 2019 sewer rates as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. First to the members of the finance committee. Any comments or questions?
I have no questions.
I'm all set as well.
Members of the council in general? Members of the public? Any comments regarding C-78? Second and final time... I'm sorry, second time? And third and final time, Mr. President, I propose that we close the hearing on C-78.
Thank you.
member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first person signed up is Gary Zimmerman.
Gary Zimmerman, 47, Lynnhaven Road. I already did my talk, but I just wanted to follow up a little bit on OPEB and the reason I come here. I'm in the private sector, and the more you see how the taxes are spent and where the money goes, and again, I try to observe when I go through the city and, and learn and see how overtime and watch people fixing things and why they're fixing things, and just learning over the last few years of the money spent. And just like OPEB, you know, and I hear, oh, we're saving millions, we're saving millions. Well, if it was done in the right, the right way, we wouldn't even be in the situation we're in with OPEB, as far as I understand OPEB. And if it was funded right in the first place, we wouldn't be asking the taxpayers to fund it, because you look at everything. You look at housing, you look at free and reduced lunch, you look at the schools, you look at everything, it comes from the taxpayer. And again, like what I said, we're a coddling society, and we're doing everything for everybody. And I, to me, I think it's got to stop somewhere, there's got to be limits. I mean, even the special ed busting anywhere in Massachusetts, you know, it's, it's just getting to the point, $2.4 million, early retirement healthcare, $2.4 million. That's $5 million that could be in the schools. And not sure if it's good for the people that are in that system, but that's why I keep up, coming up and talking, because I believe things should change, because there would be a lot more money to do better things with education, police, fire, and everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Barney Bud, next speaker, please.
Barney Bud, 321 Prospect. I just have concern about the petition 8618 about no left turn turn from Day Street onto the rare driveway of Johnny Appleseed, and making sure that we've thought about how those drivers will access the school, that we really have thought about that before we cause a huge interruption during drop off. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person that has signed up. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second call to the audience, third and final, if not, the public forum is closed. Thank you. ... Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation to accept it, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of $20,000 be appropriated to the unemployment expense account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account.
Communication 80 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a letter from the mayor dated today to the account, to the council. Members of the council, I am writing as a follow-up to my request for emergency preamble for an appropriation of $20,000 to the unemployment expense account. As you know, the city estimates the amount of unemployment expenses needed. However, it is impossible to know the exact cost of this at the beginning of the fiscal year, nor is it possible to determine the final expenditures until our May and June claims are filed and processed. With the arrival of these bills, we are $20,000 short of what we had budgeted. If this appropriation is not voted on prior to the end of the fiscal year, the city will be incurring liabilities without a means to pay for them. I appreciate your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. I'll check with members of my committee.
Are you the Florida Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I have no questions.
Counselor David Cormier?
I agree to grant it.
Mr. Chairman?
Now, we have unanimous recommendation to grant C-80.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 80 under the emergency preamble. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of $20,000 be appropriated to the unemployment expense account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, counsel has heard a favorable recommendation on Communication 80. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have Communication 81, again, an emergency preamble. Are there any questions on the emergency preamble?
Mr. President, I, I won't be voting on this one. It affects the fire department, and I have family there.
Thank you. Counselor David Cormier on the record recuses himself on Communication 81. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of accepting this as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, it is now before the council. Madam Clerk?
C-81, emergency preamble relative, relative to the appropriation of $60,000 to the Fire Department overtime account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account.
Communication 81 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a letter from the mayor dated today. Members of the City Council, I am writing as a follow-up to my request for an emergency preamble for an appropriation of $60,000 for the Lemonster Fire Department. As explained in previous correspondence on requests for prior appropriations, the Lemonster Fire Department has experienced a need to pay overtime due to job-related injuries, retirement, one firefighter in the sick leave bank, four new members in training, and increased vacation backfill. With, with two weeks remaining in fiscal year 18, the Fire Department will be $60,000 short in overtime funds. With the end of the fiscal year approaching this week, we cannot have unpaid overtime that is owed to employees at the close of the year. I request your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. I'll check with members of my committee. Mr. President?
Are you the Florida Councilor Pauline Cormier? Mr. Chairman?
We have a unanimous recommendation with Counselor Cormier abstained to grant C-81.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor heard a favorable recommendation on Communication 81. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of $60,000 be appropriated to the Fire Department overtime account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the council has heard the recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the adoption of the order has taken place. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 82. We have an emergency preamble. Are there any questions on the preamble? If not, all those in favor of accepting it as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine, excuse me, Counselor?
I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. By a vote of eight to one, the emergency preamble is now before the council. Madam Clerk?
C-82, relative to the appropriation of $13,000 to the Library Department expense account, same to be transferred from the Library Department salary and wages account.
Communication 82 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President, just bear with me one second, shuffling some papers here. Here we go.
Take your time.
This is, I have a letter from the Library Director. On behalf of the Lemonster Public Library, I am requesting a transfer of $13,000 from the following library personnel accounts to the designated operating account. The funds are available due to the position vacancy of the Assistant Director, which occurred this year. The transfer is being requested so the library can repair the West Street granite steps at the entrance, as well as some cement repair on the Pearl Street handicapped ramp. The current granite steps are Boeing, they may cause a safety risk if not addressed soon. In addition, the joints and rises on the steps need to be pointed. If you have any questions regarding the aforementioned request for transfer, please, please do not hesitate to contact me or the library craftsman, Charlie Auger. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. Sincerely, Sandra Murphy, Library Director. I'll check with members of my committee.
Are you the floor to the clerk? Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Third member, Counselor David Cormier?
I agree as well.
Mr. Chairman?
We have a unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, to grant C-82.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 82. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 82 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of $13,000 be appropriated to the Library Department expense account, same to be transferred from the Library Department salary and wages account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor heard that recommendation. Any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have Communication 83, another emergency preamble. Are there any questions or comments on the preamble? If not, all those in favor of the preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to one, the preamble has passed. We now move on to Communication 83. Madam Clerk?
C-83, relative to the appropriation of $30,000 to the refuse collection and disposal expense account, $20,000 to be transferred from the Building Department salary and wages account, and $10,000 to be transferred from the interest on bonds expense account.
Communication 83 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a letter from the mayor dated today to the members of the council. I am writing as a follow-up to my request for an emergency preamble for an appropriation of $30,000 to the refuse collection and disposal expense account. of $30,000 to the refuse collection and disposal expense account. As you know, our curbside collection is based on tonnage. Therefore, in a city of nearly 41,000 residents, it is challenging to determine the exact amount needed while developing the budget the year before. The health department does not know the final number until the June bill arrives. If this appropriation is not voted on prior to the end of the fiscal year, the city will be incurring liabilities without a means to pay for them. I appreciate your consideration of this request. I'll check with members of my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Pauline Cormier. Third member, Councilor David Cormier.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
A unanimous recommendation by Finance to grant C-83, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor heard the recommendation to grant Communication 83. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $30,000 be appropriated to the refuse collection and disposal expense account, $20,000 to be transferred from the building department salary and wages account, and $10,000 to be transferred from the interest on bonds expense account, move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor heard that recommendation. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And committee, Communication 83 will be ratified at the July 9th meeting. Thank you. We'll now move on. Bless you. Bless you.
Mr. President? Could I say something about the emergencies? I just think it's...
Can you wait until old business later on?
I was just going to point out why they're emergencies. I think it's important for the public to know.
Go ahead. If you think it's important, I value that.
I just think it's important that they're actually emergencies, not true emergencies, but it's because we're at the end of the fiscal year, and they're being transferred from within their own, their own, their own, the library from the library, the coming from within their own department.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll now move on to Communication 84.
C-84, relative to the appropriation of $64,696 to the cemetery salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account.
Communication 84 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to page three. We have petitions before the council, beginning with 79-18.
79-18, David R. Cormier, install a stop sign on Sawtelle Road against eastbound drivers at Central Street.
If there's no objection, we're going to take 79 through 83-18 in block. Is there an objection?
No objection.
If not, Madam Clerk, continue, please.
80-18, David R. Cormier, install a stop sign on Litchfield Street against northbound drivers at Lancaster Street. 81-18, David R. Cormier, install a stop sign on Tossie Street against eastbound drivers at Central Street. 82-18, David R. Cormier, install a stop sign on Columbus Street against westbound drivers at Litchfield Street. 83-18, David R. Cormier, install a stop sign on Columbus Street against eastbound drivers at Ruth Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Petition 79-18 through 83-18 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, each of these petitions will be given regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the Leominster Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in block 79-18 through 83-18 have been given regular course with referral to the traffic department. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to 84-18. Madam Clerk?
84-18, interim Chief Michael D. Goldman, amend Chapter 10 of the Leominster revised ordinance to add Section 10.3.1 relative to licensing requirements for a peddler's license as authorized by Mass General Law, Chapter 6, Section 172b and 1/2.
84-18 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, with a referral to the police department and the city solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 84-18 has been given regular course with referral to the police department and the city solicitor. 85-18, Madam Clerk?
85-18, Greenbrier Realty Trust, request an easement over the parcels shown on the City of Leominster assesses map as map 12 parcel 5, as shown on a utility plan prepared by McCarty Engineering dated December 16th, 2005, and revised June 14th, 2018, to install four domestic water services and one hydrant service off the city-owned Water Main.
85-18 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the Director of the Department of Public Works, the Engineering Department of the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, the Planning Board, the Building Inspector, and the City Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On 85-18, regular course with referral to the Director of the DPW, the DPW engineer, the fire chief, planning board, building inspector, and city solicitor. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to 86-18. Madam Clerk?
86-18, Gail Feckley, amend Section 13-88.4 of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding the following: No driver shall make a left-hand turn from Day Street onto the rear driveway of Johnny Appleseed School during the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday during the school year.
86-18 is referred to the Chairperson of Public Safety and Traffic.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Traffic Division of the Police Department. And maybe we can get the opinion, too, of the principal there at the school.
School Department?
Try to find out if this is what's going on with, you know, from their pervy as well.
Right. Okay, we're all set with that?
Yep.
Thank you. 86-18 has been given regular course with referral to the School Department and the Traffic Bureau. We'll now move on to matters before the city council. Nothing under Ways and Means and Veterans Affairs this evening. We do have legal affairs, and we're going to bring petition 69-18 to the front. Is he still here?
No, he left, so we can...
Okay, we'll just hold off on it then.
Yeah, we can go in order.
All right, very good. Okay, Mr. Chairman, 40-18, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am ready to report. Petition 40-18, Kristen Kelly, Planning Director, amend Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana Before I get into the merits of this, I think that we should commend Kristen Kelly. She left because of childcare issues, so I don't believe she's employed with the city any longer.
Correct.
But she, you know, she did a really good job on this ordinance. Whether you're in favor of it or not, she did a great job. She worked hard. And it's, you know, it's not easy stuff, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
I think procedurally, first order of business, I would make a motion to amend petition 40-18 to reflect the recommendations of the Planning Board, which is to... I don't know if I should do three separate amendments, Mr. President, or just one.
I think we could just use her a letter.
Yeah.
As a reference for the amendment.
Okay.
We can adjust that accordingly during the discussion.
All right, so I would make a motion at this point to amend petition 40-18 so that it complies with the recommendations contained in the June 21st, 2018, letter from the Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you. Do you have a second on the floor?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Bonanza. Are there any comments or questions on the amendment? If not, all those in favor of the amendment, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Frida.
Nay.
Nay. Counselor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalif Ozefer?
Nay.
Counselor Feckley?
Nay.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger?
Nay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I should record as yea. What do we have for a total on that, please?
Five, four.
Five, four. Okay. So, we have the amendment. That's the first step.
Okay.
Okay. So, 40-18 is now before Legal Affairs. Do you have a report, Mr. Chairman?
I'll do some quick committee work. My recommendation is to grant petition 40-18. I'll go to Counselor Frida.
Let me, let's do this through the chair.
Okay.
Okay. With all due respect.
Sure.
All right. Okay, so your position is to grant.
My recommendation is to grant petition 40-18. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
As amended. Thank you. I'll now yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Frida.
No.
Nay. Okay, our third member, Counselor Mark Bonanza?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a report for positive.
The recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant petition 40-18 as amended.
Okay, Counselor heard the recommendation to grant 40-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Frida?
You're with me.
You have, take your time.
This is a subject in the city that I think has so many different feelings from so many different people, that I'm not sure any of us know how to read that. When we were doing the medical marijuana, there was some differences of opinion, but I think the basic underlying feeling was that it was medicinal, people needed it, it was a whole different situation. And I was not 100% sure that I supported that, but I listened to everybody, and I listened to the people that needed it medicinally. And I came around on that, as much as I was really not supportive of having, doing it so quickly. But I think we did it okay. I think we put the safeguards in place. But this is just so completely different. I'm really disappointed that we did not do a moratorium, that we did not do a non-binding referendum in November to get a feeling from people in this community. I know we've had some counselors say, "Well, if people are against it, they'll start a petition of their own, or they'll come to the podium." I don't know about any of you, but when I'm in the grocery store, or I talk to people, they're people that aren't activists in terms of coming with petitions or coming to the podium to speak, but they want you to know their position. And I've had a lot of people say to me, "They're afraid of this in their community." I don't think we had enough conversation. How many Legal Affairs Committee meetings do we have regarding this? Very few. And it wasn't until we really got to the joint meetings at the Planning Board over the weekend. Every day, there's been something new added. Lunenburg, residents weigh in on pot. The board put out online surveys, asking what kind of marijuana business should be allowed in town, or should they? The board is looking for, to have a good, solid understanding of what residents' hopes are, and to put together regulations that protect the town. The town also has a moratorium in place till the end of the year, which will give the board time to develop the zoning ordinances if need be. I'm sure everybody saw this four-page article in The Telegram Sunday morning. We have 70 communities in central Massachusetts. Forty of them have a ban or a moratorium. And of those 40, everybody in those communities voted to support the new law. So, when you've got 51, 49, you've got 56, it's all right there. It was a huge article. So, if you've got that many people, 40 communities, just in central Mass, that are suggesting that they don't support marijuana in their community, recreational marijuana, because there's too many gray areas that they don't understand what's going to happen with the school, we can't even figure out if we got 500 or 1,000 feet around the school. That Worcester is questioning that now. So, if you've got 70 communities in central Mass, and 40 say no, or we're not sure yet, let's look at it. The Attorney General's Office today just came out with extending a moratorium in Mansfield because they haven't been able to get all their questions together. Once we support this, and it's in the community, we're not going to get it out of here. We need to know that this is really what our community wants, what our residents want. We need to know how our kids are going to be protected from it. We spent dollars and dollars and money and time to have the D.A.R. program 30 years ago because everybody was afraid of drugs and teach the kids to say no. Now, we're talking about having marijuana in the community that's been illegal, and it's still federally illegal, and tell kids, "Don't take it because it's not good for them." I'm not saying that I'm against marijuana in the community, but I really don't think that we have enough information to really support this. I don't think we did enough homework on it. I understand Kristen did a lot of work, and Counselor Bonanza did as well. And I'm not, I understand that, and I get it. And I get that some counselors want to have it in the community. I know there are dollars attached to this. That bothers me. A lot of the questions that we talk about with the budget, is that how we want to fund transportation, by having money from pot businesses? I mean, can we do better than that? There are just a lot of questions to me, and I, there's no way that I can support this tonight without having further time to really understand what people want.
Thank you, Counselor Frida. Counselor Bonanza?
All right, so I want to start with one overarching, important principle, and that is that typically, with a new use category in a zoning context, unless there's a use category for that particular type of business or industry, then that business or industry not described by that use category is not permitted to locate in the community. And we see this all the time because, you know, the world is changing quickly. New businesses are developing very, very rapidly. And if someone comes into the building department with a new business that's not described adequately anywhere in that use category, it's not permitted until the zoning can be amended to affect that type of progressive and change, and all the things that come along with technology. With marijuana, the statute, the state statute says that it doesn't work that way. Now, if, right now, we don't have a recreational marijuana use category in our zoning ordinance. We have a medical marijuana use category, but no recreational marijuana use category. So, if the usual rules of the game applied, we could take our sweet time, and we could pass an ordinance when we were ready, whatever that might be, to create that particular use category. Those aren't the rules with recreational marijuana. I'm sure that the legislature looked at this, and the industry looked at this, and said, "If we let communities just freeze this stuff out of the communities by not adopting zoning, I mean, what's easier than to sit back and do nothing? That's really easy to do." So, if we let that happen, who knows when these businesses are ever going to be given any foothold, however you, you know, deem them desirable or not desirable. I'm not in particular, listen, marijuana has given me the biggest headache in the last several years of anything that's come before this city, and that includes the budget. I don't like the stuff. You know, we voted very, it was a very narrow vote. I think it was 51, 49. Counselor Frida might know the exact numbers. But we've got to deal with it. But we've got to deal with it. So, if we don't deal with it, we get it and we get it anywhere. And then we, then our ability to restrict it goes away. And that's the work that Kristin and I did was to try to prevent a general opening of the door or the floodgates to locate these businesses anywhere that somebody wanted to go. So, that's what this is, this is what the ordinance is addressing. I did a lot of research. I studied other states. I know in California, a lot of the forward-looking communities have limited it to the industrial zone. I don't particularly want to see, and I know that there's signage restrictions and all of that, but I don't want to see marijuana businesses downtown. I don't want to see them at the Mall of Whitney Field. My policy perspective on that is if somebody wants to go buy recreational marijuana, they can go to the industrial zone, just like we adopted with the medical marijuana zoning, and that's where they can get it. We also adopted, which is our right on the dispensary side, to have the minimum number of dispensaries that we could have, which depending on, I think it's either going to be two or three. This ordinance is about as restrictive as you can get and passed constitutional muster. Now, what happens if we don't pass this ordinance? As of right now, somebody could walk into City Hall and ask for a meeting with the mayor. They could ask to negotiate a host agreement. Now, when Mr. Glowick was down here with Prime Wellness, as far as I know, he hasn't done that yet, but he could do that. Someone else could do it. If you have a medical license right now, he was half-right. You can convert that to a recreational license, but you have to have a host agreement first. And once you have the host agreement in place, you can then apply to the CCC for your conversion. Then they've got to come back here, in my opinion, for a special permit because it's a different use. Now, if XYZ Company walked in here tomorrow and asked to meet with the mayor and negotiated a host agreement and applied to CCC for a new license for recreational marijuana, and they were able to get that from CCC and they were able to find a piece of land and a location and we could, before we know it, we could have a, somebody asking for a building permit, not a special permit because there's nothing governing, there's no special permit requirement right now in our ordinance for recreational marijuana, and we could have somebody in front of us, not in front of us, in front of the building inspector, looking for, to pull a building permit to build a structure to sell recreational marijuana. We don't have a moratorium, as Counsel Frida so painfully knows, but we don't want this to happen. We want, we want to have some ordinance in place. And you know what? It's a living document. If we want to tinker with it at some point in the future, we can do that. We can look at zones. We can look at restrictions as far, as far as buffers. We can look at all sorts of things, but we need to get something on the books now to protect our citizenry, okay? If you're for or against marijuana, you still need to get something on the books because if we don't, we're going to throw it to the wind and anything is possible. And there is nothing right now, we don't have a moratorium, there is nothing right now to prevent somebody from asking the mayor for a meeting to negotiate a host agreement and taking that host agreement and going to the Cannabis Control Commission and asking for a license, satisfying all their requirements, and then coming not to us for a special permit or anyone else, but going to the building inspector for a permit to build a building because they don't need a use category. I can't say that, I can't emphasize that strongly enough. It doesn't have to be zoning in here that deals with recreational marijuana to permit a recreational marijuana facility from locating in Leominster. That I feel strongly about, and that's why I worked as hard as I did on this, to get something to protect our citizens from letting this stuff go anywhere. As a policy matter, I don't want high school kids or even grammar school kids walking downtown or in a mall and looking at marijuana facility dispensaries for, for sale. I happen to think the whole thing is a ruse. I mean, they came to us and they sold us with the medical side. Mr. Glowick, as we know, said plainly that he had no interest in converting to recreational. Well, guess what? Now, there's a CCC regulation that says that you have to maintain a certain percentage of medical product. Why do they have that regulation? Because they know what they're really intent on selling is recreational marijuana. I understand that there is medical application for the drug. I get that and I, I support that 100%. There's a lot of great information out there on that, but, you know, there's another wrinkle to this that has been in the works for a long period of time. That's where I stand on it and I hope we can adopt this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Dobrowski, you were next.
Yeah, I, I, I respect the ward, the Counsel at Large, Frida, and have worked with her for many years, but I disagree with this one. And I'll, I'll preface my comments by saying that I was not in favor of marijuana. I don't like it. I believe it's a gateway drug. In my line of business, I don't know a single heroin addict who didn't start with marijuana. Nope, they don't start with heroin. So, I don't like it, but this isn't a, this isn't a marijuana question. That question was answered. This is a zoning question. And as Counselor Badanza said, and I appreciate his hard work on this also, I was remiss in not mentioning him, but as he said, if you don't zone it, okay, then you run the risk of it being able to go almost anywhere. And it is a working document. Something changes, then we can, we can react and act accordingly. But it is something that needs to be done and make no mistake about it, it is not a marijuana question before us. It's a zoning question. And, and I, I believe that we, we need to, we need to pass this. I believe that to not pass this is irresponsible. And I, I don't think I can say it anymore, any more strongly than that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Frank Otter.
I, I appreciate the work that Counselor Badanza and the Planning Board has done on this ordinance, and it, it seems to be fairly tight. However, I, I tend to agree with Counsel Frida that there are so many unanswered questions at this point that rushing into it, even if it is kind of a defensive rush, you know, would be detrimental, could be, could be detrimental to us. I'm not a lawyer, nor do I pretend to play one on TV, but as I read this document, there's an awful lot of gray areas right now, and I think we should need to address those. I know Maura Healey, the Attorney General, just, you know, came out with the provision that the moratoriums could be converted into 2019, and that, there's, there must be a reason for that. I mean, there are a lot of cities and towns that seem to have questions on that, and maybe we should revisit the moratorium idea and see what we can do. And I'm speaking off the top of my head when I say this, but I also thought there was some, something that I read today and I have to look, look back again to find it, but that the city council could actually delay this just by putting a stop to it. We don't have to go back to the public and hold a public referendum. The city council has the ability to, to just put it on hold. And I think that's, that's accurate. I mean, I just, I don't remember where I read it and I, I just didn't think to bring it with me tonight, but, you know, I'll look it up and I'll get it to everybody as soon as I can. Because I think we have to take time and make sure we do this right, because even though it's a living document, you know, once it's in, in, in print, it's going to be hard to change. I really think that we have to take a long, hard look at this before we adopt anything. I would, I would suggest we go back and take a look at stopping it and going back and really understanding it. You know, there's a lot of gray areas in this law, if you, as you read it, and I think Counsel Badanza will tell you that, that there's a lot of gray areas in this law. And it just seems to be that we're going ahead with it and so many of our other communities are backing off on it and taking another look at it. I suspect that if we had a moratorium in this, in this city right now, that it would be, the vote would be reversed because the marijuana industry developed, designed this bill, this referendum, not referendum, ballot question, and put a lot of money into making it happen here in Massachusetts because they wanted to get a foothold on the East Coast. They've, they've got that now, but people are looking at it now and starting to understand some of the consequences. As Counsel Dobrowski said and Sheriff, Sheriff Louis Evangelitis always says, you know, that 90% of the people that are in the Worcester County House of Corrections go this route: alcohol, marijuana, heroin, county corrections office, okay? That's the route that, you know, we're facing. This marijuana that we're talking about right now is not the same marijuana that was around the, you know, in the sixties and the seventies and early eighties. This stuff is potent, sometimes as much as ten times as potent as what marijuana used to be. And it is an addictive drug, whether people like to admit it or not, it is an addictive drug, and we need to make sure that we don't turn it loose in the city. That's just my, you know, my thoughts, somewhat rambling, but sorry about that.
No apology necessary. Thank you for your comment. David Cormier was next.
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to thank, you know, everybody involved for all their hard work to bring this, you know, petition to where it is, you know, to a vote tonight. You know, as the counselor across from me and diagonally said, you know, the, the question's already been answered, you know? I mean, I could sit here and tell you my opinion on, on any kind of a drug and, you know, I'm one of those people that I don't even like to take a leave when I have a headache. I, I just don't believe in, you know, putting anything in, in your body that's, you know, any kind of a drug or, I don't even like taking prescription drugs. That's just me. But that's not what's before us, you know? I, I've said before that we have to, you know, the people have made a decision in, in our city and it's up to us, you know, to react to that decision. And if we don't, then what's going to happen is, is, is the Ward Four Counselor indicated they can go anywhere. So, you know, if you vote against this petition, you're basically saying that marijuana can go anywhere in the city of Leominster. And, you know, some of the comments that I hear from some of the people on the council, you know, indicate that they want to ban, well, a referendum, you know, vote to ban it. They should have led the charge. I mean, it's, it's, it's just as simple as that. Either you, you lead that charge, you, you're successful, or we zone it. We don't have any other option. And our zoning is about as restrictive as you can get without actually banning it from the city of Leominster, without banning it. So, I just don't understand if you're, if you're not crazy about marijuana in the first place, why you would vote against this petition. So, I'm, I'm all for it. I, I think, you know, I do, I do recognize what the vote was in the city. It was fifty-one to forty-nine percent. And I think what, what this, what this zoning does, I think, is it kind of meets everybody in the middle. You know, the people that want access to it, for whatever reason, have access to it, but I think we're clearly saying that, you know, we're not going to have it on every street corner. So, I think it appropriate, appropriately represents the vote of the people. You know, you, you had fifty-one to forty-nine. People, half the people weren't too crazy about it and the other half were. So, we're going to put it in very, very limited places and, and I think we need to pass this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cormier. With any other councils that haven't spoken yet, Counsel Shella Fozefah, next, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have a number of different, I'm just conflicted about the whole thing. I'm not a fan of it. I think recreational marijuana is a real problem. I do think it just leads, you know, people on to different and, you know, probably more potent kinds of drugs. And I also don't think, I have real concerns about just a blanket industrial zone. I think that there are some locations in Leominster, there are some industrial locations that would be perfect. I think that there are other industrial locations that wouldn't necessarily be a great location for a retail operation, which basically this would be, with a lot of traffic, you know, foot traffic, car traffic, whatever. And I think that that's, that's a real concern of mine. Expanding it, we do have the, the power of the special permit. So, my understanding was that if we didn't apply a specific zone, that people would still have to come to us for a special permit based on any location. Okay, that was my understanding, so.
Through the chair, is there a question? You're asking someone specifically?
Because I'll respond if you want me to.
Is that the person you want to answer the question?
Sure.
Okay, so you're the Florida Counsel Badanza.
That is not correct. Right now, the special permit avenue only applies to medical marijuana. We have no zoning. In order to have a special permit authority and process has to be in the ordinance. There isn't one, doesn't exist. And as I said during my discourse, if you don't have a zone for it, it can go anywhere. So, that would be with no special permit, that would be with a building permit only.
However, through the chair to the Ward Four Counselor, if we had an ordinance that said, any recreational or adult-use marijuana facility needs a special permit from the city council.
Well, that's, that's what's before you.
No, it's, this is for an industrial zone.
Correct.
Right, but if we deleted industrial zone and if we said regardless of where they want to locate, they have to come to the city council for any.
We had, agreed.
Okay.
Agreed. We had three or four hearings and I said consistently at each hearing, the real policy question involved in this ordinance, Counselor to my right is quite correct, there are a lot of issues with respect to the CCC. I went to one of their meetings and they stopped me asking questions because I didn't want to answer them anymore.
I'm sure they're working it out.
Because they weren't prepared to answer them, okay? So, I'll agree with that, but there's no questions with this ordinance. This ordinance is clear. You know, bottom line is, is I mentioned over and over again, I want the most restrictive, for me, my own policy, the most restrictive ordinance that I can think of, and that's what this is. And I said over and over, policy question is, what zone, how many permits? Those are the, those are the marquee questions, policy questions. We've had months to talk about this. I've had no one tell me during the period of time, I've had people tell me they had problems because there wasn't a moratorium. I value and I respect that opinion. I've had people talk about, you know, how many, how many permits, but no one ever said, there's never been, until tonight, there's never been a question about where. It was always the industrial zone. Granted, I haven't voted on it, but that, that's what the issue was.
Well, I think.
Through the chair.
Sure.
You done talking?
I am.
Thank you. Counsel, would you like to add to that?
I certainly would.
Let's, let's follow procedure.
Certainly. As long as everybody follows procedure, I'm happy to do that.
We do.
Okay, good.
We do. You all set?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
No, thank you.
What would you like?
I'd still like the floor.
You got it.
Thank you. I think that there was a lot of assumption around industrial zone because that's where we had ended up with the medicinal marijuana and the, the cultivation facilities, because those are industrial uses, it makes perfect sense to cite those in industrial. I've just been thinking about it, reading about it, talking with more people, and it's not necessarily, for me, a question of a zone, it's more a location, because there are some locations, I, I don't want it anywhere in the city. I mean, honestly, I'm not a fan of marijuana. I'm, I think it's a bad idea. However, given that we have to deal with it, I think it's about location. I keep thinking of things in terms of location. There are some locations that would be amenable in terms of just how they're sited, what the parking is, what the access is, that butters may or may not, may not hopefully object to a location, to a retail operation like that. There are going to be other locations for a variety of reasons, regardless of what zone they're in, whether they're in commercial or industrial, that are not such great locations because of their access, because their lack of parking, because the butters are unhappy and don't want that kind of facility near them. So, I, I mean, I certainly understand where the industrial zone designation has come from. I've just been thinking more about it and thinking, there are some locations, not necessarily, I'm thinking about it more in terms of a specific location for a retail operation, not necessarily restricting it to a particular zone, for example, industrial. That's all. So, I, I would actually propose amending the ordinance to include special permit by the city council regardless of where somebody wanted to cite it. Any, any, any location would have to come to us for a special permit in order for a, a retail adult-use marijuana facility to open up.
All set, Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils like to comment? Counsel Frida?
First of all, I do appreciate what Counselor Badanza and, and Kristin Telly have done. I understand that. I get zoning. I've been in the business for forty years. I understand zoning. My whole point, though, is we got to the zoning too fast. And what does Maura Healey's decision today do for us? Can we look at a moratorium? Can we slow it down, talk to the people in the community, do some surveying, do what some of these other communities have done for that reason? And if that's how it ends up and people support it, then go back to supporting this, this ordinance. I understand that. We also said that we'd be leaving ourselves wide open. Somebody can walk in the mayor's office tomorrow and ask for a host agreement. The mayor's got to grant the host agreement to put it in the city. Without him granting it, we won't have it. So, that, there, there are some, there is some ability to, to slow it down, even though we don't have the ordinance on the record. That's my only issue. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I have my opinion, I, I expressed it all along, this is no surprise to anybody, because I felt like we were moving too fast. You know, I, I've worked on, on, you know, the MMA, co-authoring a, a paper on gateway drugs and drugs, and I agree to the Counselor to my right. And this is something we really need to look at. So, I, I guess my basic question, can we give this further time? Can we look at what the ramifications are with the Attorney General's decision today? If it's not something that we can do in this community, then we'll look at the, the ordinance again. If it's something we can do, then maybe we can look at a moratorium to do some of these other things and make sure this is the right thing for the city. Those are my, those are my points.
I'll take that consideration back to Legal Affairs Committee at the end of the debate, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Pauline Cormier, you haven't weighed in yet. Would you like to weigh in?
I understand what attorney, what Counsel Frida is saying, and as an attorney, I agree. You know, I'm not going to support marijuana. I think it's a bad idea. I think, I, I have clients day in and day out who are in trouble, they're on probation, and they can't kick the marijuana. I get that. But what you're talking about is going back out to our constituents and asking them what they think, if their position has changed. We have no indication that, that, that their position We have no indication that, that, that their position has changed. Is it close? Is it fifty-one to forty-nine? Yes. I have no indication that, from anybody, that that's going to change. If we were to re-vote again, do I think the same fifty-one percent would support it, and the same forty-nine would be against it? Absolutely. I don't see that any particular group has made a big move from one side to the other. And again, as to what Counselor Badanza has said, and Counselor Dabrowski has said, this is an issue, what we're voting on tonight, is, is about getting this regulation, getting it on the books, getting that part of it done. I think we have to do that. And I, and I understand. I just don't, I just don't agree that going out and asking our constituents, "Hey, your, here's your position on where marijuana, have you, has it changed? I think you're going to get the same numbers that we got." And, and, in my ward, everybody, the, the numbers all came out, all three, um, zones my ward said that they were for it. I don't see any of those people changing.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gail Feckley?
So, as with anything controversial, you're going to have a lot of different viewpoints. And, uh, everybody here tonight has, you know, has said what they, what they felt. I think it's very heartfelt, too. This has been a very difficult road for all of us. I mean, just to put it out on the record, I did not vote for the referendum. I don't appreciate marijuana in my community. Um, I had issues with marijuana in my family, and it was very, very difficult. And I hope that this doesn't, um, make more families become affected by this. Um, what I would like to do, though, is I would, through the chair, like to ask the Ward Four Counselor a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, Counselor Badanza, if we did amend the ordinance for special permit without any particular zone, and then an applicant came to us and say, for example, as you indicated, you wouldn't want somebody to be down at the mall, and neither would I, um, could we deny that?
No.
Okay. So, if they...
In my, in my opinion, if someone came in and wanted to locate, uh, a marijuana business at the mall of Whitney Field, and they had a lease, um, for a storefront down there, I, I don't think we could sit here and vote against that special permit. I mean, how would we do that? I mean, the special permit criteria, it's not, it's not a, it's not a ban. It's a, it's a, as the planning board always says, they're a, they're a, a board of permitted uses. So, it's a, it's a conditions. It's, you know, does it meet the criteria? The store, what's what they're doing down there now is they're selling products. Just because it's marijuana, it's not going to make a whole lot of difference. So, it's a product. They need a place that's appropriate with parking and traffic and all those things. They'll meet the criteria. That's not going to, that's not going to stop anybody. Special permit is not a, is not a burden. It's not a, it's, it's a, it's not a hurdle that can't be gotten over. So, you're not going to be able to use a special permit process to stop someone from locating in a commercial zone, because their butters, or us, or anybody else doesn't like that particular place.
Okay. So, the answer is absolutely no?
Unless you could come up, unless it just happened to be a, a piece of land that was a horrible piece of land for traffic, or parking, or all the rest, you'd have to have some very strong criteria to say no to that special permit application.
We have, we have essential criteria.
Mm-hmm.
We have to follow that.
Right.
And if it meets it, it meets it, with no, with no bias.
Okay. Well, this is for the public to know, too.
Absolutely. You have another question?
Yeah, we know that. So, my second question is, would a butters be able to, um, keep the, keep a marijuana facility from coming into the neighborhood?
No. They'd be able to come down here and voice their concerns. Um, and they, it's a political process. They could contact their Ward Counselor, their Counselors at large. But, in essence, they're just a piece of the puzzle. So, if, you know, there's a, not in my backyard folks sometimes come home, and that's their right, and, and, you know, hey, look, I understand that totally. But, just because someone doesn't like marijuana, that isn't going to be a valid reason to deny somebody a special permit.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good questions. Thank you. I'm going to yield the floor one more time for a round on anything that needs to be clarified or has not been said yet. Okay, just remember, we're sharing information at this point. Counselor Bananza, you have the floor first.
I just want to say something that, I want to clarify a point that I think is important. Um, moratorium has been discussed. The Attorney General's decision today to expand the moratorium past December thirty-one to June thirty of two thousand nineteen has been mentioned. It's important to note that, that a moratorium is a zoning ordinance. So, if we started tomorrow with a moratorium, uh, process, it would take months in order to get the moratorium passed. Um, and that's my fear. When I sat down with Kristen, we went through the calendar, you know, with all of the little things that we had to do to get to this point with this particular ordinance, and it's been a good three and a half or four months since we started this process, a moratorium could take, maybe, maybe it won't take quite that long, but it could take a while. And in the process, if somebody walks through that, the mayor can't hold someone off forever. If he grants that host agreement, and they get a license from CCC, they could be here, and then we have nothing to protect us. That's my concern. Again, my, my admonition is, pass this tonight. If you want to tinker with an overlay district, which some communities have done, if you want to tinker with adding other potential, I mean, the best way to address areas where you don't want it commercially, but you might want it commercially, is an overlay district, uh, or address map issues with respect to where you want it to go. We can do that. But it would be better to have this in place while we're doing that than nothing. Because if you don't have this in place, you are wide open. And that's, if you're concerned, I mean, I haven't heard anybody down here say tonight that they were, they were really cheerleading for recreational marijuana. Not one person. And if that's really the way you feel, then, with all due respect, I think you ought to buy onto this ordinance and get it in place to keep recreational marijuana from coming to anywhere, any community, or any neighborhood in your community. And, and if we want to tinker with the zone later on, or the map later on, we can do it. But at least we have something to protect us in the meantime.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Dabrowski, you were next. Go ahead.
I, I just, uh, the, the special permit is not a, it's not a prohibition, but, um, it, it can be used to handle unsafe circumstances. You know, if you've got heavy tractor-trailer truck and, and not safe vehicular access to a, to a particular site, you know, it can be, it can be used, um, you know, to deny those particular situations. Um, but, you know, frankly, uh, it's not going away. It's just not. It's not going away. Um, and you, you, you can, you can delay it, I guess, but it's not going away. Uh, and the reason I support it in an industrial zone is frankly, um, it's probably the most restrictive, and it's probably the only area where you're less likely to have, um, children, um, and youngsters going. They're going to go to residential, they're going to go to rural, they're going to go to commercial. So, really, the way this ordinance is formatted, um, it, it makes it restrictive. Um, and it puts the onus on the applicant to satisfy the special permit requirements. Um, so I, you know, I, I don't see a lot of holes in this ordinance. Um, and, and if there are holes, again, it's a living document, and we'll, we'll improve them like we have with the zoning ordinance and, and other ordinances. So, um, I, I just, I just think that we, we need to act responsibly with this. So...
All set. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Frida was next.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Um, I disagree with the, with the months for a moratorium. It's my understanding that if you vote for a moratorium, it takes effect immediately as you're going through the process. I believe that was, that was shared by, um, Brian Riley at one point. I'm not positive. I'd have to look it up. But I think, once you start with a moratorium, you're protected. There's nobody that can come in and try to usurp that. So, look, I get it. I get it. And I support the industrial zone. I support the ordinance. But I disagree with, I just read off seventy communities that voted fifty-one, forty-nine. Now, when you're talking about putting it in your own community, who, people who voted for it in the Commonwealth, they're looking at it completely differently. They're at least questioning it. They want to have a discussion about it. They need to know a little more about it. Before, it was, yep, it's on the ballot, we're voting for it. It's, I'm, I think it's legal. I have no problem with it being legal in Massachusetts. But now you say, Lemester, certain areas of Lemester, you've got people that are asking the question. Um, as I said, if this came where people are so supportive, I'd be right in line to support this ordinance. I just don't feel like we did everything we could. That's, that's my biggest issue.
All set, Counselor? Thank you. Any last comments? If not, the discussion on the floor is closed at this point. We're going to take this to a vote. Before we do, I just remind the council that this requires six votes in order for it to pass. I'm going to yield the floor back as a professional courtesy, as I state to Counsel Frida to Legal Affairs for confirmation or reconsideration of your recommendation. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Uh, my, my recommendation remains. I'll ask you to poll the committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Frida.
No, I'm opposed.
Third member, Counselor Bananza?
I'm in favor.
In favor. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant petition forty-eighteen. This will be a roll call vote. I'm going to mix it up a little bit. We're going to begin with Counselor Feckley.
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Nay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Frida?
What did you say?
Yea.
Oh. Nay.
I shall be recorded as yea. Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger? That's a yea, correct?
Yea.
Thank you. Counselor Bananza?
Yea.
By a vote of six to three, petition forty-eighteen has been granted. Thank you, Counselor, for the debate and discussion. We now move on to the next page, sixty-two eighteen. Is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
Uh, if we could take sixty-two eighteen and sixty-three eighteen, if I could just inquire this, the city clerk, did we get an opinion from?
We did.
Okay.
Would you like her to read, uh, read it for you, or?
Yeah, do you mind?
How about, you have that?
I have it right here.
Okay. Counselor Bananza, you have the, you have that recommendation?
I have it. Want me to read it?
You're the petitioner. Can you share with us real quick?
I can read it. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
It's an email from, um, Brian Riley dated June twenty-one, two thousand eighteen. Lynn, you referred these two petitions to me for opinion. He's referring to sixty-two eighteen, sixty-three eighteen. In December, I sent the attached opinion regarding some prior petitions to post stop signs on private ways in the city. Petitions sixty-two dash eighteen and sixty-three eighteen filed by Counselor Badanza seek to post stop signs where Revolution Drive and Commonwealth Circle, both private ways intersect with Exchange Street, a public way. I discussed my previous opinion with Counselor Badanza and his reasons for filing the two petitions, and I agreed to revisit the issue. In my opinion, valid and consistent with Massachusetts regulations to place stop signs at the intersections designated in petitions sixty-two dash eighteen and sixty-three dash eighteen, and at the intersections that similarly involve entry on to a street that is a public way, and safety concerns merit the stop signs. I first note that my attached opinion from twelve twenty-seven seventeen accurately cites and analyzes relevant state statutes. However, upon further review, the procedure to require requests from an abutting landowner or landowners appear to be best understood to apply to situations where the traffic regulation in perenns, speed limit, traffic, traffic regulatory signs, such as stops, stop, or yield, et cetera, is confined to the private way or ways themselves. For example, a speed limit on a strictly private way, or a stop sign where two private ways meet, would generally speaking, require the consent procedure set forth in Generalize Chapter ninety, Section eighteen. As for the two petitions at issue, however, the stop signs would be placed at the end of the private ways where they meet Exchange Street, and it appears most likely the stop signs could be, could and would be placed within the city's easement on the right-of-way at Exchange Street. I also note, looking at the street map, Exchange Street turns very sharply to the southwest, less than two hundred feet from the two intersections, such that traveling east on Exchange Street could come upon the two intersections suddenly imposing accident risk to vehicles just turning out of Revolution Drive or Commonwealth Circle. In my opinion, erecting stop signs at these locations would be consistent with regulations in effect in Massachusetts. For example, the RMV's Driver's Manual listing the rules of road states that when entering a paved thoroughfare from a private road, a driveway, or unpaved road, you must stop. You must then give the right-of-way to pedestrians, bicyclists, or vehicles on the road you are entering. Stop signs at these two locations would be consistent with that directive. In addition, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, a national government publication published by, locally by the DOT, states in relevant part, with regard to the following placement of stop signs, and he goes on to list the whole long provision that is basically consistent with the regulation I just read.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, is there any objection to taking these and block?
Looks good.
Case. Uh, petition sixty-two eighteen, Mark C. Badanza Esquire, amend Section thirteen dash seventy-seven of the Lemester Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southwestbound traffic on Commonwealth Circle at the intersection of Exchange Street. Petition sixty-three eighteen, Mark C. Badanza Esquire, amend Section thirteen dash seventy-seven of the Lemester Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for northeastbound traffic on Revolution Drive at the intersection of Exchange Street. Uh, my recommendation, given the city solicitor's opinion, would be to grant both sixty-two eighteen and sixty-three eighteen. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to Counselor Frida.
I agree.
Counselor Bananza, petitioner?
I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
The unanimous recommendation is to grant petition sixty-two eighteen and petition sixty-three eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, a favorable recommendation for sixty-two eighteen and sixty-three eighteen and block. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Frida?
I just think we need to keep that opinion handy, because there's going to be a lot of people...
We certainly do. That's not going anywhere.
A lot of streets coming forward to, to do the same, so we need to be prepared.
It's going to be a pinup in a vault. It's not going anywhere. It's a great move.
I'm glad he took, I'm glad he took another look at it, because I really do think there's some significant safety concerns out there that need to be regulated.
Absolutely. That's great. Thank you, guys. Any other comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger?
Yea.
Counselor Bananza?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor, um, Dabrowski, I'm sorry.
Yea, that's all right.
Counselor Frida?
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. And blocks sixty-two and sixty-three eighteen have been granted. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman of the Committee. We now move on to sixty-nine dash eighteen. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Petition sixty-nine eighteen, Noreya Energy Corporation, amend the existing license to store thirty thousand gallons of gasoline slash diesel at four thirty-six Lancaster Street. Uh, we had a public hearing earlier this evening. Um, the engineer came down. Essentially, um, it's pretty straightforward. They're going to continue to maintain thirty thousand gallons. They're going to have two tanks instead of three tanks, uh, but it will be the same footprint. And, um, the, uh, safety precautions in the newer tanks are much more advanced than the older tanks. My recommendation is to grant. I'd ask you to, uh, poll my committee.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the clerk. Thank you.
I'm in support.
Third member?
I'm in support.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just impose on the permit itself, or the license, um, if there were any conditions on the previous one, if they can apply to this one as well?
Yes, that's, that's a good point. I meant to say that. Uh, we'd also ask that any, uh, any conditions that ran with a prior license also run with this license.
Thank you very much. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant sixty-nine dash eighteen. Are there any comments from, or questions on the floor? Counselor David Cormier?
Well, I mean, I'd just like to point out that we're amending the existing license, so there isn't like a previous one. And this one, we're amending the existing one. So, I think that'd be automatic anyway.
Yeah.
You know, but, but I, I agree, it never hurts to sort of dot our i's and cross our t's, just to make sure, in case there were anything, anything over there. So...
Absolutely. Good point. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, again, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Frida?
Yea.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Bananza?
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. The license has been granted. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, we now move on to Finance. Is the Chairman of Finance ready to give a financial report?
I am, Mr. President. Um, with respect to the excess and deficiency of free cash summary for the fiscal year, it was certified at nine million seven hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars, um, with the, uh, all of the appropriations, including the ones, um, on the calendar for this evening.
thirty-six dollars, which will be more than likely, I guess, in free cash next year. With respect to the stabilization fund, we began the fiscal year with a balance in the account of fourteen million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. During the course of the fiscal year, we borrowed or appropriated from that account in the amount of four million, six hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. We also added to the account in that amount, plus some additional amounts totaling five million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which leave the balance of the stabilization account currently at fifteen million, sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, Communication sixty-seven, are you ready to report?
I am. C sixty-seven, relative to the appropriation of forty thousand dollars to the Library Department expense account, same to be transferred from the Library Department salary and wages account. Library has a surplus in the salary and wages account largely due to some unfilled positions. The Director is seeking to use that money in the coming fiscal year to sort of, to, to enhance the branding of the library by updating a website that sorely needs it and creating some uniform signage, all to be done consistent with the lib, with the city's new marketing efforts. We had a meeting, the Finance Committee did last Thursday, and the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee is to grant C sixty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication sixty-seven. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, Communication sixty-seven has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of forty thousand dollars be appropriated to the Library Department expense account, same to be transferred from the Library Department salary and wages account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication sixty-eight. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C sixty-eight, relative to the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the Police Department overtime account, same to be transferred from the Police Department salary and wages account. This is something we've encountered a number of times over the fiscal year. As we all know, the Police Department is short-staffed, so there's a bulge in the salary and wages account, and more officers are being required, required to work overtime. According to the interim chief Goldman, as of June seventh, they were ninety-eight percent expended in the overtime account. This is to address that. Again, the unanimous recommendation of Finance last Thursday was to grant C sixty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation to grant Communication sixty-eight. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of fifty thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department overtime account, same to be transferred from the Police Department salary and wages account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication sixty-nine.
C sixty-nine, relative to the appropriation of eight thousand dollars to the Police Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Again, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication sixty-nine.
C sixty-nine, relative to the appropriation of eight thousand dollars to the Police Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. There's a letter sent down with this communication from Mr. Mitchell, our assessor, and this is in relationship to the acquisition of a site for the new police station, and this money is needed for asbestos surveys in connection with those purchase and sale contracts. It is the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve C sixty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read to grant Communication sixty-nine. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication sixty-nine has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of eight thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Again, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication seventy, are you ready to report?
I am. Relative, C seventy, relative to the appropriation, ninety thousand dollars to the Recreational Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This money is being sought to upgrade the lights and size of the softball fields at Fournia Park so they can accommodate tournaments. There's a budget estimate sent from a company called Musco, which talks about all of the equipment that's necessary in order to do this and the pricing associated with it. And I can share a copy of this with anybody who's interested later, but it's, it's pretty voluminous. But it's, like I said, for, for lighting and for, to actually expand the size of the field. The fields are just about ten feet too small to accommodate tournament play, so this would accommodate the tournament play. The lights needed upgrading anyway, so they're going to do both at the same time. That's what this is about.
Thank you very much. And the recommendation?
Recommendation of the Finance Committee was to grant C seventy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation to grant Communication seventy. Are there any comments or questions? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, through the chair to the Finance Chair. I would like a copy of that because I raised the, the question for more detail at the last meeting.
I'll get it for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by vote opposed? Okay, eight to one. Counselor Feckley is in opposition to that on Communication seventy. The petition is granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of ninety thousand dollars be appropriated to the Recreation Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, this will be a yay-nay vote. All those in favor?
Yay.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nine to nothing? Counselor Feckley, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I say yay.
Nay, okay, thank you. We have an eight to one vote on there. Thank you. The order's been adopted. We begin with, we now move on to Communication seventy-one. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C seventy-one, relative to the appropriation of two thousand, five hundred dollars to the Emergency Management Agency expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This has a letter attached to it from Mr. Coggins, the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Appropriation request, concerns about fencing were brought to my attention by a neighbor who is an abutter to the property of the City of Leominster Emergency Management Office. I inspected the CEDO fencing, separating the two properties and the fences in desperate need of repair due to age and rot. It is my opinion it needs to be replaced. I requested BNR fencing to provide us a quote to replace eighty feet of CEDO fencing with eighty feet of vinyl fencing, which is more cost-effective than replacing it with CEDO. The cost of fencing and installation is two thousand, one hundred dollars, and to remove and dispose of the old fencing is an additional four hundred dollars for a total of two thousand, five hundred dollars. I am requesting an appropriation of two thousand, five hundred dollars to complete this project as we do not have the funds in our current budget. Sincerely, Charlie Coggins, Director. It is the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant C dash seventy-one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation to grant Communication seventy-one. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to one, Communication seventy-one has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of two thousand, five hundred dollars be appropriated to the Emergency Management Agency expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication seventy-one has been granted. Counselor Ottinger, if I can just go back to the, the granting of the communication just to qualify your vote, was that a yay or a nay?
Yay.
It was a yay, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We just had you, just, you know, that's fine. Gotcha. Nine, nothing on that, ladies, all right? Thank you very much. Okay, we now move on to Communications seventy-two. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C seventy-two, relative to the appropriation of twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars to the Emergency Management Agency salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. This is relative to the retirement of the Emergency Management Director, and it, the money is necessary to buy back his sick leave and unused vacation time. Sick leave buyback is twenty percent of his annual salary, sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents, and three weeks of unused vacation time, four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. It is the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant C dash seventy-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication seventy-two. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication seventy-two has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars be appropriated to the Emergency Management Agency salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order has been adopted on Communication seventy-two. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication seventy-three.
C seventy-three, relative to the appropriation of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars to the city clerk's salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This, regrettably, has to do with the retirement of our city clerk. We wish her well, of course. And this is again for sick leave buyback and vacation time. It is the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seventy-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of two, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars be appropriated to the city clerk's salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you. Communication seventy-four, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C seventy-four, relative to the appropriation of ten thousand dollars to the Medicare expense account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. We have a letter from David LaPlante to Mayor Mazzarella dated June twenty. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, I have examined the federal Medicare expense account, and have estimated that we will be short approximately ten thousand dollars for fiscal year eighteen. Each year, we estimate what wages for employees, city, and school will be calculated, will be, and calculate the required one point, four, five percent matching federal Medicare payments due to the city, due from the city. Any employee hired before nineteen eighty-seven, I'm sorry, any employee hired after nineteen eighty-seven is subject to this tax. The actual taxes due came in higher than our estimate by approximately ten thousand, which is why I'm asking for the additional appropriation to cover the account for fiscal year eighteen. It is the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant C dash seventy-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of ten thousand dollars be appropriated to the Medicare expense account, same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation confirmed. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication seventy-five.
C seventy-five, relative to the appropriation of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to fiscal year two thousand and nineteen School Department expense account, same to be raised by fiscal year two thousand and nineteen revenue. Counselor may remember from our budget hearings last week that there is a, about a three hundred and fifteen thousand or so gap between what the mayor sent down in the statutory budget versus what the School Department recommended. This will help close some of that gap. It would, it is the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant C dash seventy-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The communication is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars be appropriated to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen school department expense account, same to be raised by fiscal year two thousand and nineteen revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication seventy-five has been granted. Now move on to page five. Before we begin, I'd like to convey a disclosure to the council. I submitted it on June eighteenth, two twelve oh two P.M. This is disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest as required by General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty-three B and three. I have a wife that's in, I believe, her twentieth year of teaching in the Lumsdale School System, a daughter who's in her tenth as a guidance counselor, and a grandson working part-time this summer for the Recreation Department. So I'll be recusing myself from the, those portions of the budget that are involved with salary wages. Okay? Anyone else? Counselor David Cormier.
Thank you very much. I also need to abstain from any and all line items in the Fire Department's budget pertaining to salary, wages, overtime, benefits. And I also need to, this year, abstain from the, I believe it's a three-thousand-dollar line item for the Disability Commission, because I am
Right.
I am on the Disability Commission now, and I'm the treasurer of the Disability Commission, so I certainly cannot wear two hats. So I need to abstain from the Disabilities Commission, the Disabilities Commission's line item in the budget as well.
That will also be noted in the minutes of the meeting. Thank you. Anyone else? We're good? Okay, good. Okay, I'm going to begin with, on page five, Communication seventy-six. Back to the Chairman of Finance. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C seventy-six, relative to the appropriation of one-hundred-and-twenty-four million, four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen general fund budget, same to be raised, offset by fiscal year two thousand and nineteen revenue. We had this on our, we had budget hearings last week, as the council knows, and this was on the Finance Committee agenda as well as a separate item, but we could not vote on that before the final hearing was conducted this evening. I'll ask you, Mr. President, to poll my committee with respect to C seventy-six.
And your position is?
My position is to grant.
I yield the floor to the Clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Grant.
The third member, Counselor David Cormier.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, qualification of your recommendation, please.
The recommendation of Finance is to unanimously grant C dash seventy-six.
Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant Communication, excuse me. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant Communication seventy-six, the recommendation. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor David Cormier.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank our Chairman of Finance for another, another year of serving in this role and, and working to get to where we are tonight. It's, I certainly have been in the role before, and I know how much work it is, although this year seemed like it was probably a little easier than last year.
I agree with that.
That's good. But I just want to, you know, I just want to explain my support for the budget, you know. I, like every budget, probably in the history of the city, it's, it's not perfect. You know, some of the things I heard during the budget hearings are issues with capital, capital improvement needs, which, you know, voting for or against this budget is not going to, you know, resolve anything. You know, that's something that everybody needs to take note of. The department has need to work with the mayor. He needs to find money and, and bring appropriations down here to address some of the capital needs in the city, and we all know that there are a lot of them. One of the things that I, I've heard with the schools this year, you know, is the transportation. I have to put my, my faith in the mayor, that he's going to come up with the money to, you know, fully fund the needs of transportation. I think it's important. You know, we all know the makeup of our city, and, you know, to not have adequate transportation, you know, would certainly be an issue. And I, I do think that, I do have confidence that he's going to come through and make sure that that is taken care of, and, you know, that's going to rest on him. If he doesn't do that, then the school committee's going to do what they have to do to reflect that in the budget and, and make a cut. So I do, I think that overall, this is a decent budget, and, and I'm certainly looking forward to voting for it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you very much. Through the chair to the Finance Chair. I did ask you, we've had a lot of conversations about the, the transportation deficit, so it's between four and five hundred thousand dollars, I guess, that is not in this budget to transport students, and in this case would be high school students, because by law we don't have to, even though everybody is of the opinion that that's a beneficial thing to do, because it prevents students from dropping out. And we heard earlier this evening about the hardship that it does place on people. So I know, I had talked with you earlier today, and you were going to talk to the mayor, and what was the outcome of that conversation?
I, I did
Counselor, you ready to respond to that?
I am. Yeah, I will, I'll respond to that. I, I did have a conversation with the mayor today. The mayor is not in favor of curtailing transportation services to the legally required services only. So I don't think anybody on this council, or anybody I've spoken to, is in favor of curtailing those services. We all know already that we're taking on faith that the mayor would make sure that the Medicaid reimbursement money, when it's available, is appropriated to school transportation, which the mayor has stated publicly that he will do. We understand that that will, will bridge about, I think it's nine hundred thousand some odd dollars, to the transportation deficit, which is
One point four.
Five million.
Yep.
The mayor indicated to me today that he will find a way to make that work, and if necessary, appropriate the funds to, through us, to make that transportation deficit go away.
That's great news. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, you still have the floor.
Thank you.
So through the chair to the Finance Chairperson. But if the, if we pass a school budget that does not have enough money to enter into a contract for busing services, which has to be done between now and August, I would imagine, I don't know, but it has to be done sometime soon, I mean, if we pass a budget that is four or five hundred thousand dollars less than what the school department actually needs, there isn't really any guarantee, I mean, it
Well, that's, I understand your point.
Mm-hmm.
We're making the same leap in faith with respect to the Medicaid money.
Mm-hmm.
Because as we all know, there's no legal requirement that the mayor appropriate that from the general fund to the school transportation needs. But he indicated to me plainly that he would make sure that the school department received the adequate funding to do it. Now, there's a couple of, you know, things at play here. I mean, the final numbers, we won't know with respect to, you know, closing out all these accounts until October, but, I mean, we either take them at his word or we don't, I guess, and that's what it boils down to. So I, I appreciate, and, and I understand how important this need is, and the fact that I had the conversation with him, the fact that he was willing to let me publicly say that, and the fact that he was public, I think, very public about the Medicaid reimbursement, I, I think places us in a position, it, it's obviously wholly different than last year, and, and the numbers are much different, and although it's a lot of money, it's a half a million bucks, it's a lot of money, it's not nearly the problem we had last year. And I'm, I'm confident that the money will be appropriated, if in fact it's necessary appropriated, or whatever the amount is, in order to get the transportation fund, fully funded.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, you all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Dobrowski.
I, uh, government, I, and, and I think the budget in particular is about policies and priorities, and, you know, frankly, and I, and I don't, and I don't know if, if it's good or bad policy, but, but my preference would be to fund the school department more. I, I don't think as a, as a community, we can really improve and grow in a positive way if we don't fund the school, fund the school department to a level where, where they can compete. But having said that, you know, I, I was at the graduation ceremony, and I was at the awards night, and just when the school officials came down the other night for the budget hearings, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of good karma there, and a lot of positive energy that, you know, you probably haven't seen in a little bit. And I'm encouraged by the increase in the percentage over net school spending. It's, it, it's a solid increase. It's not as much as I would like to see, but it's a solid increase, and I'm, I'm hopeful that that will, that trend will continue. So I think, you know, for the first time in, I don't know, twelve years, ten, twelve years, I, I am going to support this budget because of those reasons.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Bananza?
Yeah, I, I, this budget represents a lot of hard work by a lot of people, and, you know, I, I'm really appreciative of the work that the school department did this year, and, and it was a pleasure meeting with Mr. Stassen, the Chairman of the, or with respect to finances of the school, school committee. You know, budgets are priorities, and we heard during the budget hearings, as we do every year, that there are a lot of departments with a lot of very valid needs. We heard the Fire Department come down, and, you know, and Chief Sidlow is thinking very thoughtfully about the future of the department and its capital needs, its buildings, all the rest that goes along with that. He's, you know, a great professional, we're lucky to have him. Police Department has needs, the D.P.W. has needs. You know, I, we, and, and we have, we hear from the taxpayers, too. I mean, you know, taxpayers get a two and a half percent increase every year, and, for a long time running, and, and that's a burden to people. So, you know, it's a, it's a balancing act. I will say this, and I don't know that, a lot of credit belongs to the taxpayers, because they've created this, and, and also our financial team. We, we're in a position now where it looks like we're going to be able to fund a police station and those athletic fields without a tax increase, or without, you know, structurally within the borrowing capacity that we've created through the bonds that are out there now, which is, is rather remarkable. And on, on the track we're on, and I know there's, there's, look, you can have a policy discussion, and, and it's, and it's good to have policy discussions, about the pace at which we're funding our pension liability and our OPEB liability. But everybody knows that if you go to Best Buy and you buy a refrigerator to cash versus paying it on a four-year payment plan, it's going to cost you more on the four-year payment plan. And we are saving tens of millions, more than tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars on the track we're on to fund pensions and OPEB, and we're seeing a tremendous gain there, and the day will come when we have the ability to provide our citizens a lot more services for the same kind of money that they're paying in taxes now. It's not that far off. So, I mean, that, that credit belongs to not just the finance team, who's done, I think has done a wonderful job, but it also belongs to the taxpayers, who've helped to pay all this money. So I, I think we have a lot, you know, to be optimistic about as a city. We heard, you know, the sort of tale of two cities we are when it comes to school financing and the foundation budget, and how, how we're treated. We are sort of the prior of the state almost, because we have a lot of great things going for us that penalize us, and then we have a lot of disadvantaged students, and we're not collecting what we should be collecting, and I think we should seriously look at addressing that in some way, either through a political or legal forum. That's for another day. But I'm, I'm happy to support this budget, and, you know, it's, it's, I think, a team effort, and I think the city has a lot to be proud of. As Counselor Cormier said, is it perfect? Of course not. It's not perfect. But it, but it's, look, it, it's a lot better than it was last year, that's for sure, and thanks to everybody who participated in getting us to this point.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Anyone that hasn't spoken yet? Okay, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, you have the floor.
Great, thank you. Through the chair, could I ask the comptroller, who's sitting here, a question?
No.
No? Okay.
There's no need for it at this point. We've gathered all the information we need. I don't want to recess and, and break it at this point. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Feckley.
I, I want to reflect some of the comments that Counselor David Cormier brought up. Again, this is not a perfect budget. On the city side, are there some things that probably could be cut? I think so, but I don't think it would make that much of a difference, and I'm not a, you know, an accountant to figure this out within the two, less than two weeks that we had to look this over. I did take into consideration Mr. Zimmerman's comments about the possibility of OPEB, OPEB scale-back, and I'd like to look into that a little more for the next time around. I am heartened that Counselor Bananza has had a conversation with the mayor regarding adding to the school transportation, and, and as Counselor Cormier said also, we have to take him at his word on that. We had, the superintendent of schools has requested that we accept this budget, so it would be very difficult to not do so. Last year, I did not vote for the budget. The deficit was quite larger than this. There shouldn't be any deficit, but I think holding up the school and their operating expenses just isn't at hand this year. What I'd also like to do is work with the mayor regarding the Fire, Fire Chief's request for a station in North Lumsdale during this year, and I think that we all need to get together and figure out some way to give people some tax relief. And as Counselor Bananza's indicated, we do have to give these people in the city in Lumsdale a lot of credit, that they pay their taxes, that they appreciate that they have a great city with great safety and great schools, but we do need to give them some relief, because the taxes are just going up incrementally, and it's killing people. So with that, I am going to support the budget, because I feel so we need to go ahead in a positive manner. City side, not much I think we can do. School side, they have requested that we do so, so that's my rationale.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Any other closing comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote. The recommendation was to grant Communication seventy-six. I'll begin with Counselor Bananza this time.
Yea.
Counselor Adinger.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
I share, but recorded as yea. Counselor Frida.
Yea.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Nay.
That's a nay?
Nay.
Okay. Counselor Feckley.
Yea.
Okay, thank you. So by a vote of eight to one, the communication has been granted. Thank you. Thank you for all the work. A tremendous amount of work for everyone, including the Finance Committee that weighs into that, and the councils that attended the hearings, the councils that had meetings with, with people, you know, to get to the bottom of things. It's great. Great points raised, and let's consider moving in that direction, have some of those answers this year. Excuse me?
In order.
Yeah, okay. We're now going to move to the order. Does the chairman have a report?
On C seventy-six, order that the sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-four million, four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars be appropriated to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen general fund budget, same to be raised, offset by fiscal year two thousand and nineteen revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to move for the adoption of the order on Communication seventy-six. Are there any closing questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of eight to one, Communication seventy-six has been adopted. Thank you. The order has been adopted. We now move on to Communication seventy-seven. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C seventy-seven, relative to the appropriation of five million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eight dollars to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Water Department budget, same to be raised by the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen water rates, as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E. Mr. President, I would ask you to poll my committee relative to C seventy-seven. I am in favor.
Thank you. I yield the floor to the Clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I'm in favor.
The third member, Counselor David Cormier.
I concur.
Mr. Chairman, qualify committee.
Yes, the unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C dash seventy-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant Communication seventy-seven. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counselor Cormier.
Thank you. You know, I, I am in, you know, in support of C dash seventy-seven, but I, I am with a little bit of hesitation. I'm not so sure that C dash seventy-seven actually meets the needs of, you know, the, the infrastructure, really. I know this is definitely not an easy thing to say, but, you know, I, I, I am in favor of, of, you know, sort of seeking some more information from Roger Brooks about, you know, a reasonable rate increase to address some of the infrastructure issues. I mean, we have miles upon miles upon miles of water lines that need to be replaced, and, you know, but to me, the sooner we do some of them, I think the more money we might save in the long run. You know, we have a ton of water main breaks in the winter. It's, it's old pipes, pipes that were not put in correctly, you know, they, they can't, they don't have any give to them, you know, when the ground freezes and, you know, they snap. I know that's a problem up in my neighborhood. I think we probably have a fifteen-hundred-foot water main that probably has a sleeve or a Band-Aid on it every ten feet. I mean, you can see all the holes in the road where they've dug to replace it over the years. And so I do think that, you know, we need to maybe look at a reasonable increase to get a, a little bit more aggressive. You know, we can look at it as, as raising rates and spending more money. I look at it as investment that will, you know, in the long run, you know, turn over dividends by not having to have a crew go out in the middle of, you know, the winter on a Sunday night to fix a water main that's broken, because we're not addressing the capital needs of the, of the system, so. But I will support C seventy-seven tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the floor? This is the upper court. Just a tradition. Right, 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 I got to check this one. Last time, any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication seventy-seven is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of five million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eight dollars be appropriated to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Water Department budget, same to be raised by fiscal year two thousand and nineteen water rates, as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Move for the adoption of the order, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to adopt the order for Communication seventy-seven. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Mr. Chairman, Communication seventy-eight, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C seventy-eight, relative to the appropriation of five million, four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, eighty-three dollars to the fiscal
Excuse me, for one second. Mr. Hoo, on the school committee, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you gotta leave.
No, 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 you can leave, that's okay, but I just wanted to recognize you. You've been here all night, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Have fun. Counselor Bananza?
All right. Where was I? Relative to the appropriation of five million, four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, eighty-three dollars to the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Sewer Department budget, same to be raised, offset by fiscal year two thousand and nineteen sewer rates, as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E. Mr. President, I am in favor of C seventy-eight. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the second member, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I'm in agreement.
Counselor David Cormier.
I concur.
I concur.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify.
Mr. President, the Finance Committee is unanimous to grant C-78.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 78. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Council Feckley.
I have a question through the chair.
Sure.
Chair of the Finance Commission Committee. The difference between C-77 and C-78, the wording same to be raised, same to be raised offset, can you explain that for the public?
Good question.
I think it's like a belts and suspenders, so the money is raised from, you know, the revenues generated from those fees as provided in the statute, and then offset against the expenses.
Okay.
So it's kind of, it's a typo, but...
Okay, so it's basically the same thing.
Yeah, somebody missed the word offset. I have never heard an analogy like that in my life. It's unbelievable.
He sold me.
I was gonna use, I was gonna use it earlier when we were talking about something else.
I'm sorry I didn't use it.
When we were amending the, when we were talking about whether the conditions on the amended permit went along with it.
There you go. It's a great question. Thank you. Offset, Council Feckley?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on Communication 78? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 78 is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered that the sum of $5,471,083 be appropriated to the fiscal year 2019 Sewer Department budget, same to be raised offset by fiscal year 2019 sewer rates as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, that recommendation read. For the last time, any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 78 has been granted. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome.
You and your committee did an arduous task, you know, working with all the different groups in town and everything, and your communication with the mayor's office and administration. Really appreciate all your... Thank you very much. We'll now move on to public service. We have two items here, 66-18. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am. 66-18, Barbara Richardson, it all except Garfield Street is an accepted way. I don't believe we got anything back. I'd ask you to poll my committee, but I'm going to recommend that we table this. There's a long way to go to get it.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Council Adinger.
Yes.
Okay. Third member, Council Pauline Cormier.
I'm in agreement.
Madam Chair, could you qualify?
Unanimous recommendation to table 66-18.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read to table 66-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, 66-18 has been tabled. Madam Chair, 67-18, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. 67-18, Jill A. Natola, except Lexington Circle, together with a water line easement, is shown on the street acceptance plan in Leominster, Massachusetts, prepared for the Sheldon Hills Realty Trust by Hannigan Engineering Incorporated, dated March 15, 2018. The one piece that was missing was the city solicitors' comments, and we did receive them on June 22. Read it into the record. Miss Lynn Bouchard, city clerk, I read petition 67-18, acceptance of Lexington Circle as a public way. Ms. Bouchard, you have requested that we review petition 67-18, in which Liberty Rental Corporation, as trustee of the Sheldon Hills Realty Trust, the owner, requests the city to lay out and accept Lexington Circle as a public way. The layout of Lexington Circle is shown, more particularly, a plan entitled "Street Acceptance Plan in Leominster, Massachusetts," dated March 15, 2018. The plan, a paper copy of which is included with the petition. I have reviewed the plan and other materials accompanying petition 67-18, namely, the drafts of a quick claim deed, a certificate of trustee, and a certificate of title, prepared by the owner's attorney, and based on the foregoing materials, find that the owner has title to Lexington Drive. The trustee's certificate and title certification are in final form. The owner's attorney and I will make a few revisions to the quick claim deed. I recommend that the city engineer confirm that the street acceptance plan accurately depicts the layout of Lexington Circle as constructed on the ground. Attached, please find it in order to be adopted by the city council, voting to lay out and accept Lexington Circle as a public and authorizing, as a public, and authorizing the mayor to accept the fee and the roadway and other easement. Once the vote has been taken and documents finalized, please request the mayor to sign the enclosed acceptance of deed and send me the original for recording. Please let me know if you have any questions or need additional assistance concerning this matter. Very truly yours, Sharon Everett. And the order of layout is, whereas it appears that the public convenience and necessity require the laying out of a public way of Lexington Circle, is shown in a plan, is shown, more particularly, on a plan of land entitled "Street Acceptance Plan in Leominster, Massachusetts," dated March 15, 2018, prepared by Hannigan Engineering. Now therefore be it ordered that Lexington Circle is hereby laid out as a public way, and the mayor is hereby authorized to acquire the necessary land and/or easements of public way and drainage, utility access, and/or related purpose by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, all for nominal consideration, and on such other terms as the mayor deems appropriate. And witness there, as we duly elected and qualified, city councils of the city of Leominster have hereunto set our hands this date whenever we sign it. So the recommendation would be to accept Lexington Way as a public way.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant 67-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote. Begin, excuse me, Council Cormier, go ahead.
I just want to say that I hope that this is the first of many.
Oh, it feels good tonight, doesn't it?
It does.
This is great.
And I support this 100 percent.
It's great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote on 67-18, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Adinger.
Yay.
Council Badanza.
Yay.
Council Feckley.
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Dobrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I should record as yay by a vote of nine to nothing. 67-18 has been granted. We will be dealing with this one more time as the order will be coming down hopefully at the next meeting. Okay? Thank you very much for your work. We appreciate that. We now move on to public safety and traffic. Council Cormier, 72-18, are you ready to report? And if you want to take these in block, feel free.
Yes, Mr. President. If I may, I'm going to take 72-18, 73-18, 74-18, 75-18, 76-18, 77-18, and 78-18 in block.
Thank you.
And they all read, David R. Cormier, install a street light on pole number 10 on Independence Drive. David R. Cormier, install a street light on pole number 12 on Bicentennial Avenue. David R. Cormier, install a street light on pole number 2 on Drummer Lane. David R. Cormier, install a street light on pole number 4 on Indian Ridge Drive. And David R. Cormier, request to install a street light on pole number 2 on Bicentennial Avenue. We made a few recommendations. The first one is the city of Leominster's Police Department on 6/25/2018. Intern Chief Michael Goldman said that, in reference to Communication 72 through 78-18 referred to me by the Public Safety Committee on June 11, 2018, I, on behalf of the Leominster Police Department, know of no good cause to oppose the streetlights, so he is in favor. We also have another recommendation from Joe Poria, which also is, answers one of the questions that the planning board asked, which I'll talk about in a minute. I have received a request on June 12, 2018, for installation of streetlights on the following petitions, and the installation of lights will cost approximately $600 per streetlight, with the total cost for the above petitions of approximately $4,200. The question is funding. We will need to do an appropriation for money for this request. And then we also had asked the planning board for an opinion, and I do have to, I do have to admit and apologize that I wanted to go to their meeting, and I totally forgot all about it that night. I think I had a conflict anyway with something else going on, so I couldn't have went, and I probably could have cleaned up a lot of the questions that they had right then and there. But in any event, they did respond, and they said, Dear Ms. Bouchard, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on June 18, 2018, the planning board voted unanimously to request additional information from the city council and DPW in regard to the above referenced petitions. Please consider the following questions. What type of streetlight is being proposed? And I can answer that question. It's going to be a regular, standard LED streetlight, just like all the ones that are in the city now that were just swapped out. And number two, what is the cost of the streetlights? I think Joe Poria did a good job at explaining that. Number three, who will maintain the streetlights? That would be the city of Leominster. I just want to add that I was working with the city clerk, maybe a year or two ago. Somebody had asked me about Bicentennial and that whole development, when all this stuff about unaccepted streets was being talked about, and all these streets in the subdivision were actually taken by eminent domain in December of 1999. So they are all public streets. I'm sure Council Frida was very involved with it.
Took us three years to do that.
Back then, right? And so they are city-owned streets, and we will, you know, we would be maintaining those streetlights. Number four, how or why were these poles selected for a streetlight? That's another very good question. Every, first of all, the subdivision, if you put a light on every other pole, you're talking about maybe 21, 22, or 23 lights in the entire subdivision total. And that's, you know, in general, of where you'd put a streetlight on every other pole. So what I decided to do was to start out by putting a streetlight, like at all the intersections and at the end of the cul-de-sacs. Flint Lock is a cul-de-sac. Independence is a cul-de-sac. Drummer Lane is a cul-de-sac. And then I believe all the others are at intersections within that development, so I figured that'd be a good place to start. And then the neighbors will start sort of talking, and we can get more input about who wants one and maybe even who doesn't want one. Some people might not want one. They shine in their windows or whatnot. So that's how I arrived at these locations. And the other question was, can a map or site plan be provided that indicates the location of each light pole? I'm assuming that they must have some kind of a subdivision plan that they can dust off, and I will be glad to show them on there. I think, you know, I certainly can respect all the questions that came, you know, from the planning board. I think what I was looking from, looking for from them was, you know, an explanation as to if there was anything, you know, in the site plan when this came for approval, you know, regarding street lighting. You know, certainly, I'm sure it didn't indicate that there was to be none. I don't know if it ever indicated that there was to be some, or if the neighbors were supposed to, you know, pay for it, which I don't think was the case on these streets. I know that we have some streets that that was the case. So, you know, that's kind of what I'd like to see from the planning board, if we can kind of relay that to them, you know, if there was any mention of this when the subdivision was approved. But at this point, and I also wanted a recommendation from the mayor, and I have not gotten that yet, and clearly, he's going to have to make a financial appropriation to make this happen, which I'm going to work with him on. And I still need to, I did send him an email, and I have not heard back. I'm sure he's been busy because it's budget time. So at this point, I'll check with my committee, and I will do my best to get to the next planning board meeting as well. But at this point, I'd like to ask for further time to try to get a response from the mayor and see if he'll be willing to fund this. And I think on the committee is Council Feckley.
I yield the floor to Council Feckley, clerk.
I agree with further time.
Third member, Council Dobrowski.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, qualify, please.
Okay, so the recommendation for all of these petitions, 72-18 through 78-18, is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to take 72-18 through 78-18 in block and give them further time this evening. Are there any comments or questions on the floor, Council Frida?
Yeah, just through the chair to the words recounsel, and maybe you should check with the DPW and Joe Poria, get their opinion as to where those lights should go. I mean, $600 apiece.
Right.
You know, maybe doubling up isn't going to do any good. It can eliminate one or two.
Right.
And get their recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, we...
That's a good point.
If we could, Madam Clerk, then we can further ask Joe Poria if he agrees with these locations to start. I had, I do serve on a committee with our, you know, a social club with him, and I did have a quick word with him, and he thought it was a good idea, or, you know, I did mention him where they were going, but if you can get something official in writing from him, I think he's aware of all these locations.
Yeah, just for the record, to build on that, it's a great point. When National Grid owned them, we may put in a request, but when they actually installed one, they might be on a different pole. It was more or less their discretion, but we have control on that now, so working together for the best, especially public safety lighting piece would be excellent.
Right.
So thank you.
I, you know, I do have to say that, you know, I don't know why this never happened, but I know that a lot of the people up there are very, very supportive of having some lighting up there, you know, and certainly, I think we're going to do it cheaper now than we would have, you know, years ago, so I'm sure it wouldn't have been cheap for to have National Grid go up there, and it probably would have been $400 a light and, you know, the whole bit. So it's ours now. We make the investment in the lights and won't be paying very much at all to operate them, so I guess it didn't hurt by waiting.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the recommendation? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation to give 72 through 78-18 in block further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. We'll now move on to city property. Communication 53, Council Adinger, you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, I am. C-53, Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requested a property known on the, to the assessors as map 302, block 1A, and located on Jungle Road be declared surplus. We had been waiting for the, to see if we got any action on the RFP for this particular property. That was, the deadline for that was the 18th of this month. We did not receive any requests, RFPs for it, but I understand that there may be some other interests. Initially, I was going to ask that the petition be denied, but I, after I've heard this, I'd like to speak a little bit more to the purchasing agent and find out what, if any, interest is really there, so I'd like to recommend further time.
Okay. Can we poll your committee, you all said?
Yes, poll the committee if you please.
All right, I yield the floor to the clerk, Council Badanza.
I'm in favor of further time.
Third member, Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The recommendation is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read for further time on C-53. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Old business. We're kind of at mid-season right now, going into the new fiscal year, so if, I just wanted the clerks of the committees, I know we've been pretty busy the past six months, so just want to give you, to requalify, if you have any minutes from any meetings that you had, if you can just kind of clean them up and get them to our assistant clerk. And what will happen is we'll get those into the records, all right? So as we move into July, we'll start with kind of a clean slate. Also, if you can check your folders and see if there's anything that's been tabled for a while, I think that we're getting better with that, but in the meantime, there might be some pieces that if, that the agenda slows down a little bit, we could be working some of the tabled petitions to get them out of the way one way or the other as well. Okay? So if you could just check on those independently, I'd appreciate it. Any other items on the old business? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would request through the president to reconvene the President's Committee on City Ordinance Review. There were a number of items that we had discussed briefly, and then there were a couple of things that we wanted to follow up on. There was a traffic fine ordinance, there was a commercial vehicles on residential property ordinance, construction projects we had talked about briefly, and at one point I talked to the police chief about the lack of police detail for some of those things, and the signage is inconsistent, so that was another thing. And we also talked about perhaps including language in contracts for contractors when they're out in the streets doing this kind of work. And yard sales, Council Feckley, who was the other member, along with Council Badanza, and then there was, there's a curfew ordinance I want to take a look at.
Okay, well, if you can share what you just shared with us.
Certainly.
And what I'll do is we'll take a look at, and I'll get back to you on that. Okay? All right, thank you very much. Any other items on the old business? Okay, we'll now move on to new business. We have a first reading of an ordinance. Is the chairman ready to report?
I, I am, Mr. President. Thank you. First reading of an ordinance relative to amending Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning by amending the Leominster zoning map, so that the following parcels are situated in the Residence B zoning district. Pleasant Street West Side, Map 481, lots 19 and 20. Map 521, lots 1 and 39. Map 488, lots 1, 5, 6, 7, 8. Map 494, lots 18, 3A, 31A, 32A, 32B, and 32C. Pleasant Street East Side, Map 561, lots 35A, 36A, 37A. Map 340, lots 1 and 2. Map 410, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 22, and 23. Map 496, lots 1, 2, and 3. Low Street, Map 488, Lot 5. This is formally legal, this is formally Petition 1418. Before I get into my recommendation, do we need a hearing on the second? We don't need a hearing. Okay, good. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I hear the floor to Counsel Frida, the clerk.
I, I agree.
Counsel Bonanza, third member.
John, I was really missing you reading this. I mean, I was, I was going through withdrawal.
Hey, one more time after this.
Have you memorized it yet?
I want to do the stop sign again.
I, I am in favor.
Okay.
Because I don't want to hear it again.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify your recommendation.
Unanimous recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
Counselors, here are the recommendations to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Frank Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Debrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. We'll now move on to another first reading. Legal Affairs, formally Petition 52-18. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance relative to amending Chapter 13, Section 13-29 of the revised ordinances entitled handicap parking spaces, creating one reserved space in front of the Gallagher Building, 24 Church Street, located on Marion Avenue, closest to Church Street. The recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a hearing on the second reading for July 9, 2018. And I would ask you to poll my committee.
I hear the floor to the second member.
I agree.
Third member.
I agree.
Thank you. Requalified?
Unanimous recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and establish a hearing for the second reading on July 9, 2018, at 7:10 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, here are the recommendations read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and to establish a hearing on July 9 at 7:10 p.m. in the council chambers. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yay.
Counsel Debrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading of the ordinance has been established, with the hearing scheduled for 7:10 p.m. in the council chambers on July 9. Community calendar, any events taking place that you want to bring to the community here? Counsel Cormier?
I just want to give a shout out to the, the ball hockey players. They're in the World Junior Championships. They're currently playing in Nitra, Slovakia. Over 100 kids from the Leominster area alone, they joined together with kids from all over the country. So we have the, over 100 people from Leominster who went out, parents, coaches, the majority of the coaches. This was 18 months in the making. These people started, these kids started fundraising. And as of the beginning of this meeting, the U-14 and the U-20 teams both won in their games against Europe today. Unfortunately, U-16 and U-18 fell today, but they played Canada, who is always one of the number one teams everywhere, and they're by far the steepest competition for the United States. So a shout out to all those kids and parents and coaches and sponsors, especially the people of Leominster who sponsored these kids. Fantastic trip for them, long plane ride. We got a ton of pictures on Facebook of those kids hanging in airports and, and sitting on the planes for hours upon hours, but they're doing great. They're out playing, and best of luck for the rest of the tournament for them.
Fantastic. And, and by the way, you're the Ward Two City Counselor?
I am.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in Ward Five. Counsel Feckley, you're like Miss Little League. Isn't the apex of the city championship like the 12-year-old team in the majors?
Yes, it is.
Wondering, North Leominster, America Little League, which league won the city championship this year? Do we know?
We can all guess.
Well, we can, we can ask Counsel Pauline Cormier if she can answer that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Mister Laura won't answer that when I ask them. So congratulations to the kids, and all the kids at the planes throughout the city. It's awesome. Any other items on the community calendar, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much. I just want to let everybody in the public know that the Mass Nurses Association is holding a food drive to benefit Ginny's Helping Hand and the Spanish American Center. It's called Stuff a Truck Food Drive. This Saturday, June 30, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Demola supermarket down at the mall at Whitney Field. And the nurses are doing this because kids in the summertime are a lot more food insecure. They don't have school breakfast. They don't have school lunch to depend on. So the nurses are doing this food drive that will support both Ginny's and then also the Spanish American Center, which does a lot of outreach to the various programs throughout the city. So I hope that people will swing by Demolas and hopefully contribute to that this weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a meeting on the 29th. If you haven't been invited, you are invited, and that's to go to Health Alliance Hospital. And at 7 o'clock in the morning, there'll be some transparent disclosure regarding some of the things that are happening up there right now. And that's at 7 a.m. in the morning in the administrative building in the basement, okay, conference room. So I'm reaching out to you if you're interested in attending that. If you haven't RSVP'd to them, just give them a quick call. If you need a number, I'll get it to you, okay? Any other, any other items on the community calendar?
I just have a quick question on that.
Sure.
Did, did you set that up, or did they?
I did, and then they confirmed it. No, they set the meeting up.
Yeah.
This is the President's meeting. Yeah, okay?
Well, no, not really. Most, most of us work at that hour of the morning.
I, I just, I know. It's unfortunate, but that's when they have it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go to the meeting. I also, several of you, or if not all of you, have probably had a conversation with administration up there regarding some of the changes that are happening. They're reaching out. And my, my suggestion was come down to the council chambers. When Mr. Duncan was the VP, he would come down here on a regular basis and kind of give us updates on things happening. And that was an agreement we had with them going back to the overlay district that was awarded to them as a result of almost 18 months of a long process. And my suggestion would be to come back down here so they can also share with the community. So I think right now, I, I don't know where they're at right now. I have not spoke to the CEO there directly, but they were looking for feedback, and I think that's what the meeting is all about on the 29th, where they're at at that point, okay? All right, any other items on the community calendar? Okay, so we have one other item to deal with here tonight. And first of all, let's, let's all say happy birthday to our city clerk, Lynn. You know?
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
This is a birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Lynn.
Happy birthday to you. Boy, would Wayne Nicol would love to suck his voice into that, baby. I know Bob Savatelli though.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's been, it's not a eulogy, it's a birth when you retire, you know? But I think, you know, we'd be remiss without spending a few minutes just kind of reflecting on things. And I just, you know, I want to start it off, and then I will go around if anybody wants to add into it. But Lynn has been a garden angel for that office for a long time. It's not always easy working in there, as we know. And sometimes the policies and practices are something that you just kind of get involved with it, just passed down from one generation of clerks to the next, and you just take them on, this is how we do things. And, you know, she was really overtaxed this year and for the past few years, when it came down to elections and dealing with all the candidates. And one of the things that I, I hear continuously is her unbiased relationship with each of us. You know, her, her level of confidentiality, where you can go in there and sit down with her and talk to her about things, to get some advice. And, you know, whether you've had a chance to be in the council president's seat, or the vice president's seat, or wherever you've been, you know, that's the thing that, that really reflects the professional that she's been for such a long time, but also a part of our extended family, you know? And it's been, you know, we all, we're human beings, and we all live in this very complex world. And it's not easy sometimes. We go through things with our own personal lives and our families, but we have to continue to, you know, put on the city council thing every second and fourth Monday night and everything in between. And sometimes we really get overtaxed and overburdened with things happening. And Lynn's always really had a, a real level head when it came down to being able to help guide and steer us in the right direction. And I say this with all the love and the heart as a friend. And we're going to miss her, and I think that we're in pretty good shape. You know, we're, we're kind of knocked off our seats a few months ago, but we're in pretty good shape right now with the things that are happening, you know, in that office and where we're going to be going. But to Lynn and Danny, you know, and the family, the kids, they've been such a big part of this community for, for their entire life. And we just thank you so much. So I'm going to give you a citation on behalf of the council. It's really not a big deal. Your husband's going to use it as a dot point, you know? And, and just go around. And why don't we start with Claire? Go ahead. If you want to pass it, you want to come back to it, it's fine. Very informal.
It's kind of hard to add anything to you, Mr. President, but I was fortunate enough to be in a position to hire Lynn back in the day. And obviously, it was a pretty good, pretty good choice. And you're right, she does things unbiased, does what she can for everybody involved, always answers the phone. That's, that's one thing I have to say, because sometimes I'm last minute checking something, and she answers that phone. And that, that really makes a difference sometime, when you look, especially today. But what can we say? I mean, she, she's, she's, no, there really isn't. I mean, you cover all of it, and it's very difficult to come up with words that, that are adequate to say what you, how you've been. So thank you, and thank you.
John?
No, I'm, I'm going to miss you a lot. Not only here, but in the office and on the phone. Always, always professional and, and always pleasant. But hit them straight.
She galls. That's not directed to her husband.
And enjoy, enjoy it, and, you know, stop by. Stop by from time to time.
That's usually when I'm calling her last minute, when he calls me last minute and says, hey, I'm not going to the meeting tonight.
Sue?
Yep, thank you. Congratulations. Well deserved. You've worked really hard for a long time. Now you get to spend time with your little grandchildren. I don't know if Danny's going to part with them, though. I mean, you might have to wrestle him for some quality time with the kids. But I have really depended on you very much, as other folks have said. You know, picking up the phone, being responsive, just being able to count on you is, is something that I've always really felt. I could just call up, and I knew you'd get the answer, you'd have the answer. And you were always there picking up the phone. So that, I will absolutely miss you. And we go way back. Lynn and I go way back. So I will, I will absolutely miss seeing you around the office, but I, I'll see you around town. Absolutely.
Yell?
So we have a common theme here. We're all going to miss her terribly. And it is, you know, very important that she always answered the phone. And sometimes she'd answer the phone, and I'd give her something really wacky, you know, and she'd say, no, or, you know, oh, yeah. And, you know, I always took her advice, because her advice is, is, is very worthy. So we're going to miss you, Lynn. I'm very happy that I've been to the office a couple of times, and I've seen how well you've been working with Caitlin and, and TD. You know, I had the opportunity to be on their search committees, and I hope that we, I know that we've made good choices. And so we'll create a relationship with the two of them now, too. But we are going to miss you, Lynn. I, I couldn't have done this without you. I, literally, I couldn't with, with all the questions that I had when I first started. So good luck. Enjoy your well-deserved retirement.
Mark?
Well, as all the prior councils have indicated, your support, Lynn, of us as a council, has been superlative. I, I could not have asked for anything more. Every inquiry, every question was always professionally responded to. But one of the things I'm going to miss the most is the levity, because you always had a smile on your face, and you always brought some humor to it. And God knows, you need some humor in this business. And that was a very welcome element to this whole process. And thank you from the bottom of my heart for every one of those exchanges, because you've, you always pick up my day when I've been in there.
Frank?
I know it's going to be somewhat repetitious, and it's a new member of the council. I haven't dealt with her from the council perspective too much, but she's always, always been a great help. But in some of my previous activities, whenever I had a question about city government, I don't care how dumb it was, or how off the wall it was, Lynn was very, very great at answering the question and doing it very professionally. So I appreciated that. Okay?
Thank you. Pauline?
I, along with Frank, got to the party a little bit late as a result of a special election. And, and right after the election, the very next day, Lynn said, come on down, we'll swear you in. And unbeknownst to me, my entire family, an extended family, wanted to come. And I called Lynn in a panic, and I said, you know, I've got all, and she said, don't worry about it, come down, we'll do it downstairs in the chambers. And my whole family was here, and I have all the pictures, and you made it really, really special for me. And I, I, I look at those pictures often, and, and thank you so much for making that so special for me. And I just hope you love your retirement and enjoy it.
Dave?
Yeah, well, unlike Counsel Frida, when you were first hired into the city clerk's office, I, I was not here. I was probably, I was probably still in, I don't know, yeah, maybe, maybe grammar school or something. But, but, but you were certainly here during, you know, all of my time and, and being president, which is, you know, the president has to bounce a lot off of the city clerk. And there's a lot of good memories of being in your office, a lot of laughs. If I could add up all the minutes that I was in the office, you know, over the years, they probably would add up to months worth of time. You know, and, and as you leave, you take a lot of institutional knowledge. You know, that's one of the things that I notice about the city clerk's office is, you know, when you've been there for a while, you know how to put your finger on something. And it could be a question that braised about something that comes up once every five years. But if you're not there, you know, if you haven't been there through it all, you kind of take some work to get the answer to a question. But I'm certainly going to miss you. I'm going to miss all that knowledge. Whenever I've needed help, you've always been there, and I'm going to miss that. And I just want to remind you that you can speak to the person sitting next to you. I'm sure there's a lot of volunteer opportunities. You can, you can count, you can count censuses, or you can volunteer to do election stuff. So hopefully, you'll be around and you'll volunteer, and we'll still see you. So good luck. It's well deserved.
Sure. Lynn?
I just want to say thank you to everybody. I loved being city clerk. My favorite part of being city clerk was working for the council, I must admit. It was the funnest part. You're going to be in great hands with these, too. And I told them I'm just a phone call away.
Thank you. Thank you. So I think we should have in the, on, in the minutes tonight, a standing ovation. Nice job. Well done. The community owes you a dead gratitude. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the meeting is over. Thank you.
The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.